So I will call to order the Wednesday, September 16th, meeting of Narberth Borough Council. It's 7:33 PM. This meeting is being held over Zoom and being streamed live by the Civic Association. Mr. Metric, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Ms. Pennanopoulos?
Here.
Mr. McGreevy?
Here.
We see Mr. Weissboard is attending the meeting. Mr. Bush?
Here.
Ms. Rickards?
Here.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch?
Here.
Ms. Elshacks?
Here.
And Council President Aaron Mutrick?
Here.
And Solicitor John Walco?
Here.
John, in honor of your new position at Kekany Law, would you like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I'd be honored. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Some brief comments. We have an extensive agenda tonight. It is a sign of all the hard work that all council members are doing to push forward their agendas under their committees or their interests, and all of it is for the good of Narberth. In an attempt to make the best use of our time, I would just ask that in all of our discussions, sort of a nod to the affirmative is good, a nod to supporting what somebody else says is good, and reserve your comments, if you could, for sort of a difference of opinion or new facts or information that you can bring to the debate. And hopefully, we can get through all of this material. I also wanted to alert council members and the public that when we reach the action item section of the meeting, it is likely that we will recess into executive session briefly, probably no more than 10 or 15 minutes, and then we will rejoin into public session and continue council business. Not usual that we do that in the middle of a meeting, so I call it out here. Ms. Mayor, do you have a report?
I do, briefly. I anticipate the monthly report will be filed a little bit, it's a little late tonight, so it'll be filed in by tomorrow. That will be submitted. Second, as promised in previous meetings, the police policies have now been posted on the borough website. Understand that it is a continuing, ongoing project, and that as policies will be updated and added, that they will be added to the website. But the majority of what we have available to be put up is up at the borough website. Next, just please be advised, construction has begun at 114 Forest. The west side of the sidewalk at that location, from the middle of the block to Windsor Avenue, has been shut down, so please use the other side of the sidewalk and use caution in that area. Finally, we had a little bit of a loss, well, actually a big loss, in the borough this week. Judge Kathleen Valentine passed away. I want to acknowledge her service to the borough. Judge Valentine was on Borough Council, and in fact, she was the first female head, president of Borough Council. She served this community for many years. We send our best and condolences to her family and friends.
Thank you, Andrea, and condolences as well, sitting in the presidency. I called on Judge Valentine many times to get her history, to get her insights, to get the background, and to get her counsel on things. And, you know, she took the job of stewardship of Narberth Borough very seriously, and I can only hope to perform as well as she did in the role. Thank you, and you will be missed. Discussion items 5A, the Human Relations Commission. I think, I don't know if Andy is on here as a dial-in?
Yes, he's the...
Feynman, correct me. There you are, Andy.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Could I give you the floor for a moment, and you could give us some background on this?
Happy to do that, though let me step into a quieter room. I appreciate you having me. My name's Andrew Charles. I'm the Chair of the Human Relations Commission. When the commission was established, it was given the power and the authority to accept complaints alleging discrimination in violation of the ordinance, the Human Fair Practices Ordinance, which is ordinance 1000. And the ordinance says that upon request of the commission, upon the commission drafting certain rules and regulations, we may present them to council, and council may pass them or not. And the rules and regulations would be aimed at giving us what's called... Excuse me.
Sorry, you're all right.
Those expanded powers are to go beyond the mere authority to mediate complaints, because right now, we're only authorized to mediate and try to conciliate disagreements about violations or alleged violations of the Fair Practices Ordinance. We would be given the power to investigate and to enforce the ordinance and to adjudicate claims, so that if the town to be in violation of the ordinance, we could award damages or injunctive relief. It's the view of the commission that we should have that power for a couple of reasons. One is, why have an ordinance that makes something unlawful if you can't actually...
Uh-oh.
There I am.
Oh, there you are. Great, continue if you...
Okay. One is, why have an ordinance that makes something unlawful if you can't enforce it? Two is, our ordinance is more expansive than state and federal law. State and federal law, for a bunch of reasons. One is, when it was passed, it included sexual orientation. And at that time, violations of people's, you know, discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation was not unlawful under federal and state law. It has since become unlawful under the category of gender discrimination, at least as a result of a recent Supreme Court decision, Bostock, in June. So our ordinance was more expansive in that respect. It is more expansive in some of its definitions of disability. More important, it is more expansive because it covers small employers, and most employers in Narberth are smaller. You have to have an employee to be found guilty of, or to be required to not discriminate against that employee. Under federal and state law, those requirements begin at 15 employees. So employment, for example, is something that, for a small company, is unlawful in Narberth, but not necessarily unlawful in a way that can be enforced against people under state and federal law. So we fill in a gap that is not present in federal and state law, and we think we should be able to enforce the law where we fill in that gap. Where a person files a complaint and it is covered under state and federal law, it's our intention to refer them to those agencies rather than use the budget and the resources of the borough. We would only want to use the budget and the resources of the borough where we outlaw something that is not outlawed under state and federal law. I should say, I've talked to other human relations commissioners, or particularly one in Lower Marion, which surrounds us. They've had a very small number of complaints in the eight years of their existence. I think that the passage of this resolution to give us the powers to adjudicate and enforce will not be a major drain on the resources, but will be a signal that we intend to enforce the law where we have to. So that's my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions if you want me to.
So does anyone have any questions for Mr. Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Charles. I appreciate all the hard work that you've put on this, put into this over the past couple of years. I'm wondering, so does this ordinance would also apply to borough employees, right?
It does, yes.
Okay. And are there... I know that you said it was based in part on Lower Marion Township's ordinance. When we had a conversation, are there significant differences between, any significant differences between the ordinance and ours?
I'm going to tell you one that comes to mind, which you can decide whether it's significant. When we get to mediation, Lower Marion had a much more elaborate process by which the mediator had to qualify under certain training standards, and the mediator had to abide, agree to abide by a certain philosophy of mediation. It was our view, one, that if the parties could pick a mediator, it would be better and would create better faith, and two, it would be cheaper and more sensible if we could pick mediators who are willing to serve, and, you know, so on. So we simplified the mediation. I should say also, Mr. Walco was very helpful in helping us draft this, and I don't want to blame him for any shortcomings, but I do want to give him some credit for having helped us to get to a spot where we thought it was legal and workable as a set of rules.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have...
Go ahead, Mona. Finish your line of thinking, and then we'll move on.
Okay. So if, what would happen, say, if the parties disagree on a mediator? They can't agree on a mediator?
We could appoint one.
All right. I'll wait for other people to ask questions.
Go ahead.
So my question was just more clarification. So the group would adjudicate and then determine the damages rewarded? Is that how, this might be a question for John Walco, too. Is that how other HRCs, I mean, do they legally award that, or is it a recommendation?
They award it just like a, yes, they legally award that pursuant to the powers of the ordinance. The, we, any award shouldn't exceed what would otherwise be permitted under the Pennsylvania or federal requirements. So that's something that you need to be careful of. Quite frankly, I'm not aware of any municipality who has the expanded procedures in place that has actually ever had a hearing. So it's sort of uncharted territory, and we're talking 10-plus years of this ordinance being around. But yes, it can be awarded, it can be appealed, and but for this ordinance, there wouldn't be an avenue to adjudicate that in the Court of Common Pleas. So it almost would be appeal, almost like a zoning appeal or an appeal of a decision of a governing body to the Court of Common Pleas for adjudication.
Okay, thanks. That answers my question.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Okay, so we have this written up, and I believe it was circulated. Did everyone receive a copy of it? Yes. So we could choose to act on this this evening. We could modify the agenda. We can deal with that when we get a little further in the meeting, or if we would like more consideration or questions or review, we can do that. But hoping that we can act on this one way or another quickly, so the commission knows where it stands and can plan its next steps. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Thank you. Am I needed for any further proceedings, or can I...
No, I think we're okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the members. Bye.
Bye. I'll move to 5B, which is a discussion and introduction of the Climate Action Plan. Rob, I don't see Jesse on here, so maybe you're the best person to bring this to the table.
Yeah, thank you. This is a plan that's been a year in the making, and my thanks to Jesse Lidle, the EAC. They've partnered with ICLI and college interns to establish the baseline greenhouse gas emissions, and then use a software called ClearPath to develop forecasts and write this plan, which is essentially a menu of options for how we can achieve 100% renewable energy by 2040, which is, of course, the resolution we passed in 2019. So it has been vetted by our committee, Public Health and Safety. We approved it and decided to move it on to the full council. So now it's before us, and the EAC is recommending that we discuss. You know, the committee would like to see us discuss it, possibly take action to approve of it. It is, one thing I want to say, it's kind of a living document in the sense that, you know, climate change itself is dynamic, and the solutions in terms of carbon reduction are also changing as new technologies evolve. So the document is, the EAC's best recommendations at this moment. But of course, the council, in each year, can decide which of these solutions they want to, they might want to pursue, and there may be other solutions that are not included here yet.
So any questions from council members to Council McGreevy? Any thoughts? Fred?
I do have one. So I was looking at sort of the monitoring provisions. So a lot of these are sort of decisions that council is going to make along the way about how to, you know, how to achieve more energy efficiency or how to shift into energy-efficient operations. And there is some, I'm just trying to think of like expenses that the, you know, this would entail for us that are not obvious. There's some monitoring, there is, there are some recommendations to stay in the ICLI program. And I'm just wondering what the cost of that would be for a broken hour.
Yeah. So the monitoring is done through the ICLI software, and that membership for our borough would be $500 a year. That's a software that we had free access to this past year because of the DEP's grant program that we were a part of. And the EAC and our Public Health and Safety Committee would recommend that we continue to be members of ICLI at that $500 a year cost. And that would be a way, then, to measure our progress.
Rob, I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to the, there are two aspects to this plan. One is suggestions for government, right? Things the government can do, and they're twofold. You know, one might be the choice of how we fuel, you know, power our vehicles. Another might be how we do infrastructure improvements that might increase or decrease our greenhouse gas footprint. But there's a third component, which is really for private citizens and businesses sort of best practices and advice. And it's not typical that, you know, when we adopt the plan, whether it's the comprehensive plan or the zoning code, that it sort of speaks maybe to how private people are living their lives in the borough. And, you know, how much, you know, is the, I'm asking as if I was a member of the public here. You know, if we pass this plan, do I have to change how I heat my home? Right? Or what does it mean for me?
Yeah, that's a fair question. I think you're right. The plan kind of works on two tracks. So one relates to municipal operations, borough-owned buildings and vehicles. And then the other relates to the citizens of the town, and these are recommendations. So no one could be forced, you know, to adopt a, you know, a heat pump if they prefer a different kind of technology. But in this plan, there are recommendations for how to educate the public on different options. There are recommendations on possibly how to incentivize some of those green choices for private homeowners. So for example, the Green Fund is one idea that could be established, and monies could be used to possibly incentivize the adoption of green technology. So, yeah, no one would be forced, you know, but it is a plan of how we would get from here to there. And given the resolution from 2019 applied not just to borough operations, but to, it was a community-wide resolution, this offers us a roadmap.
Any other questions from council members?
Can I make a quick comment? Another question, if no one else? So just following along with the idea of if the public's watching, I think it is, we can get to a certain place as the borough government, but I think some of the even larger impacts will be citizens, residents, choosing to also change some of their practices. So, you know, I just, there is a local group, Climate Action Narbs and Neers, that has an excellent, Narbs and Neers, that has an excellent website with things that local residents can do. And people might not be aware that anyone tomorrow, whether you own your home or you rent, you could, with a couple 15-minute call or two, change your gas and your electric to renewable, and the electric is at competitive rates. And I think it's really important for people to know that because that could provide a huge help to the plan. Sorry, I'll stop.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Thank you, Mona. And I would just also add that the EAC has led to public fora this summer to seek public feedback, and they have worked with the Public Health and Safety Committee over many months. So I'm very grateful for Jesse Lidle's leadership in this.
So what I might suggest for next steps here, would be a resolution from council formally accepting this plan from the EAC. You know, it's a recognition that we are receiving it. There's some implicit level of endorsement, and thanks for the work done. And then through Public Health and Safety, looking for that plan, one sort of accepted, to start seeing recommendations, right, of a strategy and a policy of things we can do on a variety of levels, you know, some immediate and sort of low-hanging fruit, and some larger and more strategic. All right, I'm seeing some nods.
Sounds good.
So we'll amend the agenda a little later to do that. Let's move on to 5C, capital plan. Councilor Rickards, I know you discussed this in your committee.
We did. Sorry, I was just making a note. Thank you. Because I have a suggestion, then, of where we could put this work from the EAC into a new budget line in the capital plan. Okay. So we, I sent out a survey to all council members, just saying, you know, what do you think? What are the priorities? Is there anything that should be admitted? Anything that should be added? And any questions for the good of the group? And that information is in now the FNA SharePoint folder, under Information Item. So you should have that. We just met, and FNA has some recommendations, if you can give me a second here, of what we can talk about now, and then what we can bring back, have conversations, and then Sean can bring back, take another look at that budget, and then we can vote on that in October. And those things include, the five who responded to the survey all agreed that sewer and stormwater were a high priority. And you can look at individual answers, as I said. FNA had a disagreement in how we prioritize that with the CIP. In other words, do we want to say tie the paving funds to the sewer and stormwater assessment? So in other words, saying, we're not going to agree to vote on road paving funds until we know that there's been a sewer and stormwater assessment. And this is where we had a little bit of a disagreement, so we thought we would bring that to the table. Do we want to give that caveat to that line item? Aaron, are you okay? Can we just discuss this here?
Yeah, yeah, let's discuss it.
Okay. So what is, I mean, to Mona's point, she's saying, you know, why would we build a road on top of a sewer that's about to fall apart? Fred, I can let you speak for yourself, but we're saying, well, you know, we could do some spot assessments and repaving and take that approach, too. Mona and I were really kind of comfortable with saying, no, let's say, you know, we are not going to repave a road until that we know that the sewer system and stormwater system is intact.
Well, I might lead the discussion off by asking Mr. Metric, what would be involved on a section of road for doing that assessment? What would that sort of the timeframe be? You know, I'll just use the Windsor Avenue, Windsor Avenue as an example, because it's very highly trafficked and has been, has come up at other meetings due to its condition.
Sure, sure, thank you. There's two things that go into that assessment. Understanding the location of the infrastructure in relation to the upstream network and making an informed decision about its carrying capacity. That issue is harder to understand until you have a complete picture of the network. The easier piece of data we need to figure out is the... Pardon my pause. My dinner is getting delivered, so, thank you. The second piece of the data that's easier to find out, in the sense that it's more, it's more immediate, and it costs anywhere from, for, you know, for 200 linear feet of analysis of a camera going through the pipe, you might be looking at an $800 to $1,200 expenditure. That's the qualitative data we need. We need to look at the infrastructure itself and make sure it doesn't need any immediate repairs. So if I'm confident, reasonably confident, we can find solutions that we can, we can do that diagnostics on a smaller scale and figure out if there are any issues before we commit resources to fixing the top layer of the cake, the paving and base.
So I've spoken with Sean, and I think that, you know, the goal is for the borough to have a more comprehensive map and sort of knowledge of the sewer and stormwater maybe by the end of next year. So we may not have the full knowledge that we would need, or we may not have extremely good knowledge of the entire network until kind of after paving season next year. So if we wanted to pave next year, we would be relying on these spot checks rather than a, you know, a full analysis of the flow rates through the system. So there would still be a possibility that we would make a decision afterwards to take out those pipes, but I don't know, it seems like a small enough chance that I would be willing to go forward with the paving project next year.
Maybe I could ask a question to Mr. Harmon. Are there areas of road, based on the assessment, that if they would not be repaired within the next 12 months, could be more expensive to repair in the future? You know, if it starts to, you know, degrade the underlying structure of the road?
I'm not quite sure how to answer that question. As far as Conway Avenue, we had an infrastructure failure underneath the roadway, which caused the collapse. I do not, and I'm not aware of any other situation within the borough similar to that currently. We do have a situation on Howardford Avenue, and there's another one up on Essex Avenue. But those are not in safety issues as far as, you know, failure and collapsing.
Have we had any complaints or calls about people who have had damage to their vehicle, potholes, or anything related to their suspension or issues based on the condition of the road?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
And Aaron, just to remember, as Matt brought up, I mean, he did that assessment of our road data, and there was only one small block that really needed some immediate attention. So overall, I mean, we have the data to suggest that there's not that issue. That's the question that you just asked.
Yeah, just that's sort of the picture I'm building here.
So the part B to that question, then, is to use your cake analogy, Sean, right? So like the layer of the sewage and the stormwater, you know, okay, is that intact? Okay, yes, let's say, yes, it's intact, so we will now repave the road. Then the part B is, do we want to say we're not going to commit to repaving that road unless it's done with a complete street assessment? Meaning stormwater, pedestrian walking, traffic calming, whatever, bike lanes, whatever that is.
Right. And so...
So in other words, holding ourselves accountable.
So where did the committee fall on its discussion of its complete streets, as it might... this complete streets as it might relate to pavement?
Nonconsensus, that this really has to be a larger question. And, you know, I'm saying, I asked the question, is it worth borrowing money and doing this comprehensively? Matt thought that was really financially not viable to do via lending and grants. Or do we want to do it, you know, does it make sense to do a piecemeal, even if it's going to cost a little bit more if you're having one or two streets done versus, you know, a large section of the town?
Matt, do you have something to add?
Yeah, you know, it was, we had a really good conversation, constructive conversation in finance and administration. And I I think the money would be would be best spent on funding and assessment for our stormwater and sewer. I I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I know we've been talking with the borough engineer about what that would cost to do that holistic overview and get that geographic data that we could then overlay with our road paving assessment. My recommendation is to put money towards funding those two comprehensive studies that we would, you know, hire our Panoni or or Borough Engineer to help us and work with us, the borough staff, to get it to a product that we can then use to help guide our decision making on which roads should be invested in. That's what I that's my hunch. Instead of going to do a all encompassing repaving program for the entire borough, I would like to see the money put into those two studies for the sewer and stormwater. And they could be done concurrently. They're pretty close together. When we have a crew out on a road segment, we can get both of those things and curbs and sidewalks, right? If we're talking about complete streets, let's look at the curbs and sidewalks on every road segment as well. And that's a project that, you know, Sean and I've talked about with Ed and the Borough Engineer. And it's something that I do think that we can do. It's going to take a commitment both financially and staff time, but it would be well worth that investment. And then that that would be a couple of months worth of work. And then we can use that data to then help us define what truly are the problem roads that we need to reinvest in.
Matt, if we invested in that kind of survey, collecting that data, for what length of time would you say that data remains valid? Like before it becomes stale or systems change or there's new technology and and sort of we can't use it anymore?
A good question. And so the data that we collect is going to be in a format that has been around for a long time, and it just keeps getting better with the geographic information system. The data itself, you know, road paving is a little more fluid than the sewer and stormwater infrastructure. Sewer and stormwater infrastructure have a longer life than surface that just doesn't have the wear and tear. So we're looking at and I I'm sure Eric, the Borough Engineer, would be able to give you the the lifespan of sewer and stormwater. I just know off the top of my head, it is significantly more than roads. Case in point, our sewer infrastructure, it's all approaching its useful life, right? And it's it's all mostly all original sewer infrastructure. So that just gives you an idea of the timeframe that sewer infrastructure, the longevity of that.
Would you would you say that most communities have already collected this information about their underground utilities?
Many do, not necessarily in the format that I'm looking to get it in, that would be pretty proactive. I know of several municipalities that do have it. And, you know, we're in a unique position in that we don't, we own the infrastructure, but we don't have our own sewer facility. And so we, you know, the municipalities I know who have really good infrastructure and on the on the digital side also have their own sewer authority. So we really don't have good data, even in hard copy. And so this is a crucial data set that the office really needs. So I would I would strongly encourage council to consider funding the the collection of both of these data sets.
And do you have a ballpark dollar figure?
I don't. I could get one from Eric. I know we talked about it. I don't, we did not give a, we never finalized the the estimate. Well, I could work with Eric.
I know I'm asking a lot of questions here, but I think if we knew the scale of the assessment in terms of dollars against our anticipated obligation for paving, I think it would help to put everything in in context and help us make a decision.
Yeah, so it's going to be a lot more labor intensive than the paving analysis. Since paving analysis is mostly surface, you know, looking at surface images and analyzing different structural deficiencies. This is going to be a lot more labor intensive because it's going to mean someone out in the field putting a camera down a pipe and actually recording it and taking measurements. So I assume the cost will be, I'm going to ballpark it maybe six to seven times that of the road paving. I'm probably thinking tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands, you know, for both.
When you say against the road paving, you mean against the cost of the road paving assessment?
Yes.
Not actual pavement?
Yes, correct. Yep.
Okay. So what was that ballpark number that you and we're not, I'm not holding you to this, but it's a sense of scale.
I'm going to guess tens of thousands of dollars.
So if I said fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I would be comfortable with that. I'm hoping it would be well under that, but I
Let's be conservative and we'll imagine it's more and then we'll be happy when it's less.
Yes.
But I think against hun, you know, Sean, I think in the capital plan, you had indicated there was about seven hundred thousand dollars in necessary paving if we if we wanted to do all the paving in the plan, right? So this is about six or seven percent of that.
I think that seven hundred thousand figure was our our level two and three condition roadways. Yeah.
Right. Okay. All right, I've talked enough. Other thoughts, council members?
Well, I'd like to go back to the the idea of the complete streets proposal. This is something that's in our comprehensive plan as an encouragement for us to develop a complete streets proposal. It's in the the climate action plan as well. And it seems like having, it's something Sean tasked us to talk about was how are we going to incorporate pedestrian and bicycle, multimodal improvements into the capital plan because they weren't, they're not in there right now, right? There's no funding for anything. So we talked about this in infrastructure and what we came up with was to sort of move incrementally along with the repaving program to incorporate money for, you know, changes to the segment that is being repaved and to, you know, incorporate ADA improvements or any kind of crosswalks, any kind of, you know, structural stuff that will help do some, you know, help allow other modes of transportation along with the automobile. And that's the, I found out later that that was exactly the approach that the Borough of Elizabeth Town took. They passed a complete streets proposal. And that's what it is. You know, every time we repave something, you do this checklist and you make sure you follow the checklist. So I think allocating a certain amount of money annually to carry on improvements alongside the road paving is sort of an incremental way to take care of these, you know, these other transportation modalities that also need our assistance and to make sure that we're, it's also an opportunity to look at the, look at the sidewalk for code compliance. And, you know, make sure that the the homeowners are doing their part to you know, keep our, keep our sidewalks, keep our pedestrian landscape functional. Just to instead of doing it, instead of trying to like do everything all in one swoop, which I think Matt and Sean, you know, felt would be quite a challenge to do it incrementally along with the paving would be a an easier way for the borough to take care of this. I'm not sure that's suited to like an actual bike lane planning, which is many streets and many blocks, but looking at a lot of pedestrian and a lot of other improvements can be taken care of at this small scale level, I think. So we were recommending an annual amount be added to the capital budget alongside the paving, basically.
So Aaron, if I can hop into to, oh, sorry, just to, I'm going to hop down a bullet point to try to connect the climate action plan and what Fred was saying about complete streets. And that is the recommendation to add an expenditure category. So for example, when we see public safety right now, you see a line that says public safety fire, public safety police. The suggestion is that we have a public safety, environmental design and infrastructure or whatever we want to call it. And you know, while it's somewhat just philosophical, I think it is a really important distinction because you're saying that climate action plan is in fact about public safety. Right? Complete streets is not aesthetic, right? It's not a parking survey. It is in fact probably one of the biggest public safety tools that we have, right? Looking at pedestrian safety, stormwater. And I think it warrants its own budget line and expenditures. So that whether it's the complete streets approach, whether it's a line to actually really invest in that climate action plan, I think we should put it under public safety and and allocate funds for that. Or the green tax funds, Rob, to your point, you know, that 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 would go in that budget line item.
Other council members?
I just, I want to add in that I agree with Fred on doing the complete streets as we go, piece by piece, if we can. But for me, I do, I feel strongly that we shouldn't do that until we're sure that we've checked the sewers, that we know which sewers need to be repaired. And after stormwater and sanitary sewers are fixed, then go ahead with the complete streets as we're doing the road repaving. But I I think, because I, I mean, I'm looking, I might be reading it wrong, but I'm looking at our, the capital, you know, the proposed capital budget, and I don't see anything for sewers right now. I don't know if it's in another line item. But we get significant, I know we get significant sewer funds, we get significant highway funds. I see a hundred and forty five thousand for the roads, but not for sewers. And I I would really like to see that number be bigger for sewers, storm and sanitary than it is for roads until we make sure, I just, I don't think you could, I think with increasing extreme flooding, extreme storms, I think like Cindy said in FNA, maybe none of us were aware how big of an issue this was until four hundred Conway. You know, we noticed significant issues in the last big flood and storm. And we found out that there were sewer pipes that we didn't even know about on private property. So I think it's really important to do that part first because you can't build on top of a house of cards. It affects public safety and it affects our police and public works crew who were responding to those calls. So I I am very much in favor of complete streets, but I, yeah, I just want to say again, I really think the sewers have to be taken care of first. So we know we're not wasting money and we're building safely on top of what we have.
Sean, can I ask you a question? And then I'll get to Michelle. If we if if say we wanted to take the suggestion of Counselor Bush and do complete street improvements, pedestrian ADA, some bump outs, things like that, as we went, what kind of multiplier do you think that would have on the cost of paving that section of of road? So paving is one point O. Are we doubling the cost? Are we tripling the cost? Is it one and a half? What do you, what is your professional opinion?
Infrastructure replacement in a street zone gets more expensive the lower you go. So putting in a new curb is not that bad. We estimate that on our U and O form to be about a hundred and seventy five dollars a linear foot. Does that sound right, Matt? Because that has to be buried eighteen inches below grade. Gets significantly more expensive the deeper down you go to repair infrastructure, where probably the most expensive thing you can do is go down ten feet and dig up a sewer pipe and replace it. There's other technologies available to repair pipes because of that reality. The thing I don't, I I do like the idea of assessing and understanding and and estimating costs at at one time. I'm not sure, and I'll need to talk to the engineer about that, if the if it makes sense from a construction project management perspective to sequence infrastructure renewal in a in a way, kind of like kind of like pasta coming out of a pasta machine. In other words, to to sort of fix everything as you go. I don't know if that creates more of a more of an issue, more of a management issue from a construction management perspective or not, but that's a great question for Eric that I'll get some feedback on to help us with this decision.
I mean, I would say that I don't envision this as being, I'm sorry, Michelle. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I I feel like, I feel like we're sort of talking about two different things. They keep getting kind of intermingled. So on the one hand, we have the subsurface sewer sort of core difficult, hasn't been looked at in a century. You know, stormwater and sewer and solid waste system that's down there and we know can create large problems. And that, you know, when Cindy was first first bringing this up in her report and described sort of the 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 differences of opinion and emphasis that came out of the committee, what I was thinking is I have no idea because I don't have enough information to answer these questions about which is going to come first, the chicken or the egg in any given street or section of the borough. So when Matt then gave this review showing that he sort of thought this through and is already sort of started to do the legwork to figure out how to do that assessment, I thought, yeah, that's where I start. Because like, until we know what's under there, we can't, we can't really make, I don't think we really have the information to make good decisions about how to sequence these projects and when to move forward with with street because it's probably not like council set the priorities, like set up, it's going to go this way, one, two, three, four, five. It's probably going to be, well, it kind of depends on multi, multiple factors. And the balance may come out different in one, 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 one area or one street, depending on the sewer and and the need on the road above. I think it's just going to need to be worked out, but without the data about the condition of the of the infrastructure down there, it's, it's, you know, your guess is as good as mine. So I would really like to see us start with that. I'm wondering who would be doing that? If that's something Panoni would be doing, if that's work that we would need to bid out to multiple providers, what the timeframe for doing that would be? I mean, if we moved forward with that, well, is there any likelihood that we will find out that there are certain areas that really cannot be assessed with cameras because of the age or the depth, the the windiness or the the condition of of what's there? What kind of information will we get back? Will we get back for our investment enough information to say, yeah, we we can plan, we can count on this? Or we still have a lot of gaps in our knowledge? I think knowing all of those details would help figure out how aggressively to move forward with that assessment. But I agree with Mona that we really should start there with respect to what we do once, once, once we start resurfacing the streets. I actually, I mean, I agree with everybody that integrating complete streets into road repaving is very sensible. You could say, as Fred said, we should add a budget item for complete streets. Or you could say that's just part of our road repaving program. We're not necessarily going to add more budget on top, but it may mean that we that we do our road repaving more slowly. You know, the same amount of repaving may need to be done more slowly if it's somewhat more costly because we're integrating pedestrian and other complete streets improvements. So those are my thoughts for now. All I can say is I really would like to to hear more from Matt. I'd like to see what it would take to move forward and get that information so we can make better informed decisions.
So I'm synthesizing what I'm hearing and the general idea would be that we would do the underground assessment of sewer and stormwater. We would plan to withhold doing any paving in 2021. As that information comes to us, we also have the opportunity to discuss and cost complete streets above ground because we're sort of buying ourselves 12 months where we don't have to worry about shovels showing up. And could then work into a better idea of sort of how far our dollars will go. Right? How much paving can we do per dollar and whether or not sort of some of those complete streets add-ons make sense as a whole, right? You know, if they, if it adds twenty percent to the cost, probably achievable. If it's three hundred percent of the cost, you know, maybe council would address it differently. And I don't know what it is and none of us do. But we could put that plan together and then we could sort of pick our level of investment that we'd like to make in the infrastructure of the town. Does that, I'm seeing a lot of nodding, so.
I just, I'm nervous about not doing any repaving next year. I just want to be very clear that, you know, the the reasons that, you know, the reason that we're concerned about this is because we had a breakage in the street on Conway. And, you know, there's a very expensive repair coming in. And that's, that's why everybody is, that's why we're changing our thoughts about repaving. For everybody out there, we still recognize that repaving is an important priority, but we don't want more broken streets and having to repave them over and over. So trying to take care of that.
So I might ask Ed in Public Works, if there are sections of road where you are getting reports that they have degraded to a point where they're causing property damage to vehicles, they're becoming unsafe in a way that isn't, you know, you can't just go out and fix it, right? You're patching it again and again. Then council, you know, through the Borough Manager, council would like to hear that. We're not looking to neglect our infrastructure, but we are looking to get the most life out of it as possible. And we're looking, when we do spend money to repair, to do it right. And that takes time. But if something becomes an emergent issue, we would like to hear about it and we're willing to reassess.
That was a caveat in the discussion too, of course. Like, all of this is predicated on if there's an emergency situation, of course, we're going to attend to that. Okay. So that's pretty much.
It's important that the message not be, council won't fix it, so why bother saying anything? If you see something, say something. That's what we want to know.
Very true. Okay. So we agreed, stormwater, sewer, stormwater repair. Once we have that data of assessment, we could talk about sequencing of repaving. Generally, folks agreed, there was consensus on holding off on all vehicles, police and public works, unless there is something critical, with the exception of perhaps the parking attendant vehicle, if it's replaced with an electric vehicle. We have requested from both Chief Gallagher and Mr. Harmon, a written report just on the vehicle, you know, the assessment, the need for investment to keep them on the road, because I think that will help us all. We all, we all said this is something that can come off of that plan unless it's critical. There was consensus that there should be no investment in municipal property that is Conway Windsor Sabine unless it is critical infrastructure, safety, security, or ADA issue. The last issue that came up was looking at, while it doesn't directly affect this capital plan per se, as it's written, is looking at our fire company reimbursement. Rob, I'm not sure if this should be in PHS or FNA, but looking at our kind of call to services for fire and the, we don't get reimbursed as other surrounding companies do by the township. Aaron, you're looking funny, so I'm gonna.
When you, yeah, when you say don't get reimbursed, just tell me more specifically which funds you're talking about.
So Sean can comment on.
Sean?
Yeah, thank you. I think there's, there's two main expenses that the Narberth Fire Company incur, the capital expenses that we're meeting and working with them on to figure out what, what level investment needs to be made every year to sustain the rolling equipment, the self-contained breathing apparatus, all the equipment that goes into fighting fires, all the durable equipment. And then the second cost is what's the operating cost of the fire company on an annual basis? And we know, we know a lot more about that because we own the facility that houses the fire company. We, we know what the salaries are of two full-time firefighters. We know what workers' comp insurance, fire hydrant is, and the general liability insurance to cover the vehicles. We know that really well in your budget. The question Cindy's posing is, the Narberth Fire Company is a membership, a member of the Lower Marion Fire Department. It's one of the seven fire companies that serves Lower Marion residents. Narberth Fire Company just happens to be located in Narberth and serves all of Narberth residents. And those six other fire companies receive a substantial stipend from the township for, to, to cover their operating expenses. And the Narberth Fire Company does not. So even though many of our calls to the Narberth Fire Company are answered in Lower Marion Township, are in sites in Lower Marion Township. So we're going to be sitting down with the chief, deputy chief, Matt and I, and learning more about the history of this arrangement and trying to understand it better, how we got into this. What were the factors that played into the, the present situation? So that we can have a frank conversation with the township about funding fire services that are provided, provided in the township by the Narberth Fire Company, which is almost entirely funded by the borough dollars.
That makes sense. Sorry, Cindy, I was thinking about something else. So thank you for the explanation. And I think there've been a lot of handshake quid pro quos between our municipalities over the years. And I think it serves both communities to enumerate their, those relationships with MOUs and understandings and sort of straight up dollars and cents. So everyone knows exactly, you know, where, where services and funds are going. And I fully support that. Thank you. Sorry, Cindy, if you could continue.
So that was really the comments with the capital plan and the budget. Again, you all have access to the survey results in our SharePoint. The five respondents, we really were pretty much in agreement. There was a lot of emergencies that came from the questions answered, that I think Sean found helpful and then can take a look at, think about, reflect those comments on the next draft for our October meeting.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's go to 5D. Mr. Walker, I'll give you the floor, and you can bring us up to speed on a complex scenario and how you suggest we deal with it. And then Mr. Bressi is here also to add some local flavor.
So this is the development at 3 Elmwood Avenue? Is that 5D?
Right. Just sort of how we're, how we're handling this, given that it's in two municipalities.
So this is just a sketch plan that has been filed in both Narberth Borough and due to its location, also in Lower Marion Township. The, right now, it is just a sketch plan. And there's a lot of work, in my opinion, that needs to be done, really before the plan's really given a lot of consideration by our actual planning commissions, because there are issues regarding floodplain and the FEMA maps. There's also some access issues that they have to deal with PENDOT. So there's some outer, outside agencies, significant outside agencies hurdles that they first need to address to make sure that the plan that they have provided is a viable plan, whether or not there's going to be any changes due to the floodplain and the access. The plan has been reviewed by the Montgomery County Planning Commission. I was just provided the letter today. It's a September 10th County Planning Commission letter. And again, it's just a sketch plan. The County Planning Commission generally is, is in favor of the plan from, from what is shown. Again, the details need to be worked out. And there's certainly some things that need to be done to make it more code compliant when it comes to, you know, setback issues and acreage issues and minimum lot size issues, or building size issues. But the, I think the question that's posed to everybody is like, how is this reviewed? Because there are two municipalities that are doing their own reviews. Plan itself, I believe, is claims to be in compliance with both Lower Marion and Narberth. The way it works right now, again, each individual planning commissions eventually will be doing their reviews. Now let Mr. Bressi talk about that when it gets to that point. But we're going to review this plan to make sure that it is code compliant with Narberth Borough. We're not going to say, give them a pass just because something may or may not comply with Lower Marion as well. Again, we're not there yet. We may eventually get there once they address these issues. But it's, it's an odd that it's in dual municipalities, but it certainly isn't something that's going to jeopardize our reviews or cause us to come at this at any sort of handicap in any way. And with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Bressi, the Chair of the Planning Commission, to see if he has any other comments he'd like to make at this time.
Hey, thank you, John. John, I'd like to add one thing, though it's really your territory, so correct me if I'm wrong. But I think it's important for council to know that the state planning legislation, the municipal planning code, does not actually dictate a protocol for situations like this, except to say that the municipalities should work out how they will review it among themselves. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, the municipality planning code says that there is a interjurisdictional plan that cannot be agreed upon, where there are conflicts between the two municipalities, that the county planning commission should sort of serve as a mediator between those two municipalities. Again, at this point, there isn't any of those issues that have come to head. But if there are, I think that is something that we would do to try to get the best plan that works for both Narberth Borough and Lower Marion.
Yeah. I guess all I'll say is, we've been in touch with Mr. Walker about this for, for a while now. And the advice that he has given us is what he just described to you, which is that we should review this plan as if it were entirely in the borough of Narberth and to see how it complies with our code. And the letter from the Montgomery County Planning Commission has pretty much done that, although they, they did provide some analysis that breaks issues down between the two municipalities. My reading of that letter from the municipality, from the Montgomery County Planning Commission is that there are an extraordinary number of places where this application arguably does not comply with our code. And so there's a lot of work to do to bring it into compliance. And there's some fundamental issues that are related to the scale of the building. So the question we would have with the planning commission would be, is it a better strategy for the borough to ask the applicant to respond to the comments of the Montgomery County Planning Commission and the eventual comments of the zoning officer and the borough engineer before we enter a formal review process? Or do they want to enter into the formal review process with a, with a plan that, according at least to one reviewer, has a lot of flaws in it? I would be hopeful that there would be a way to ask the applicant to work on it further before we formally review it, while they are working on the issues that Mr. Walker described, which are the access issues and the floodplain issues. I feel like it would be premature for us to spend our time on it until more of this was worked out. But I understand that's direction that we would receive from council and from the solicitor.
Yeah. And to be clear, again, there is a timeline that we do have to review it or that we do have to take action on it. So everything we're talking about is based upon the assumption that that timeline for review will be extended by the, by the applicant in order to work out these issues that, for all intents and purposes, it's not plan compliant. So I think the borough and planning commission would be hard pressed to approve the plan as it is right now. I'm not sure, and I'm not sure if Sean knows currently when, because we did get a previous extension for that plan. But if they don't give us additional extensions, we're still not ready, then we are going to have to take action. But again, I don't see that as, if I'm representing, that has to be the reasonable path to take in order to be protective.
Any questions from council members, hearing this?
I guess my, my big concern is about it being so close to our floodplain, so close to our flood zone and where we already have significant flooding right by our public safety departments, our fire and police departments. I'm really concerned that it being so close to that area, expanding what's there from a house to several apartments could make the flooding a lot worse and expand the area of flooding. So I'm just wondering, what types of, other than the typical zoning procedures, what types of actions should the borough be taking to make sure that we're looking at all of those issues?
Well, I'm not sure if they have to apply, if they're in, if they're needing a waiver or variance from our floodplain ordinance, then we have the floodplain administration and the hearings to address those issues. So it's sort of like a zoning hearing board, but it's regarding floodplain issues where they'd have to demonstrate certain standards. But in addition to that, they have to satisfy FEMA and FEMA's standards and their experts to ensure that if they're going to alter that floodplain in any way, or if they're going to try to say that the floodplain needs to be redrawn, then they're going to have to take that up with FEMA and demonstrate that, that they're right, that this should be outside the floodplain, or that if they alter the floodplain in any way, that's in violation of our ordinance, that it, you know, that they are doing measures to protect health, safety, and welfare, and have FEMA and both the borough satisfied in that regard.
We haven't typically had development where FEMA is involved. Do they have a representative that comes to attend these meetings to share their feedback? Or is this something where you just get a letter, you know, of sort of their status and how it relates to the development?
No, I don't think you'll actually see somebody at the meetings. It's almost like a county review. There's a FEMA review from Washington where they'll, they'll look at it. And the FEMA engineers will talk with the applicant's engineers. And we can have our borough engineers involved with that as well to, to address any of those issues.
Well, I think hearing these concerns, and I know Mona's not the only one, I think it would make sense to at least have representation when those conversations are happening to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and that we feel like the FEMA engineers are giving it a fair shake and, you know, a clear reading of the laws.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Eric Johnson, the borough engineer, to make sure that he's involved or that they have the right person at Panone regarding floodplain issues is involved in that.
Yeah, I believe they are trying to get the definition of the floodplain changed from FEMA. I don't think they can build it unless they, as it is, unless they get FEMA to admit a mistake and say, it shouldn't have been drawn this way. So.
Wait, Fred Bay is in the developer?
I believe so. I believe the developer is talking to FEMA.
Do we have any, do we have any kind of like official standing in those discussions as the municipality and where the floor plan exists? Partly, John?
Yeah, there, there is a process through which floodplain geography can be modified. They're called letters of map revision. And there's an application process that's reviewed by FEMA. And credible engineering evidence has to be given to them to redraw the map. So there's a process to redraw maps, and anyone can request that maps be redrawn. But you have to be supported with credible engineering evidence.
Yeah, my question is, can anybody oppose that application as well and say, well, here's some additional engineering evidence that suggests something different, or here's some additional considerations, or is it just a one-way application?
Yeah. Again, we, the, we have our ordinance. Now, we drafted our ordinance and we actually redrafted it recently because of the amended FEMA floodplanes. We adopted it as is, as what was recommended. So through our ordinance, you know, we have a process to protect the borough's interests. So if, if, and when the time is appropriate for us to get involved in that, we can get involved in that. The, the difficult side is that we can't just say, hey, FEMA, it seems to flood here a lot. There's a lot of rain. It's pretty soggy. We're going to have to come up with our own actual evidence-based, you know, the, the engineering-type soil-based samples and engineering things that are, you know, that I went to law school and not engineering school to understand, to in order to support the, our position, which we could, we could get.
Bob, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Aaron. John, can you hear me?
Yeah.
John, this development has a significant curb cut on the East Blue Road, which is a, it's a PennDOT highway. Is, would they be required to get approval from PennDOT to install this kind of curb cut?
Yes, that's, besides the floodplain issues, when we mentioned the access issues, that is the PennDOT approvals to get access on to the Wood Road. So yes.
I think somebody told me, although I don't know if this is true, is there, is this also partly on SEPTA land in addition to being in Lower Spanning, Lower Marion, and Narberth? Or is that a myth?
I haven't heard anything about SEPTA.
But SEPTA land, but I don't, or Amtrak land.
I'm sorry, I meant Amtrak, not SEPTA.
Yeah, I think it abuts it. I don't think it uses it.
It doesn't, okay.
Okay, to my second question, actually, there's a dotted red line around their July 7 submission. The dotted line appears to extend like the parcel all the way to the tracks west of the Eastbound Track. Is anybody else looking at it right now?
Todd's got it.
And then, I mean, there's also, they're also showing their kind of floodplain. But I don't know if that means anything. But there's this strange kind of delineation of land that it goes up the hillside, which I always thought was, was right, was Amtrak right.
Yeah, okay, I think this is where I'm getting it from. Thank you, Bob.
And so.
Is that what you're looking at also, Michelle?
So what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna suggest here is, is it's complex. I don't want to, I don't want this conversation to be misconstrued as sort of council trying to find a way to stop a development, because that's not, that's not what we're doing. But we are very interested and invested in our zoning and our floodplain ordinance and all the things we've set up to protect Norbert citizens and preserve a certain quality of life and a certain amount of environmental protection. And I think John and Sean and Todd, the will of council here is let's make sure we are represented at meetings, even outside of just meetings for Norbert. And let's make sure we are preserving our rights and we are making sure that everyone else who's involved is doing a good job at making sure this project is compliant and can be approved as, you know, as we will.
Will do.
Okay. Yes, Mona, go ahead.
I'm just wondering what type of data should we start collecting on recent floods? Because to me, it really could potentially be a health and safety issue. Like, should we start collecting pictures and data of the flooding right near and adjacent to that area in recent storms?
Yeah, I'll have a talk with Eric Johnson from Pinoni to see what he thinks would be the best. And if it is time to do that or if there's a need for that right now. He's probably best to speak to that process about what's required of someone from his office. And I'll try to arrange for him to maybe do a summary of the process. And I'll work with them to put something to explain that that process better for councils to understand. And what council could do if there's any assistance on their behalf that's needed to assist in that process.
So is the plan for now to simply seek an extension from the applicant for a full review in just in view of the fact that there are a lot of complex issues still, still to be resolved? And with the assumption that that would be granted, but if it were not, then does that mean that our planning commission is then sort of required to invest the time upfront to review this application?
I mean, they, they, they only need to do as much time that they, they need to put in in order to realize they don't want to approve the plan. So you don't need to get into setback and lot size, building size issues. If you say, well, the access is off and the floodplain issue is off. Again, to be productive and actually do a review of a plan, that plan should be taken in viable form at that time of review. And I would hope that the applicant would at least have a viable plan moving forward before they really want the time to move forward for reviews and approvals. And if they don't, then, and they're wants to go forward on it, then we'll go forward with the plan as is. And I don't think you have to guess too hard about how that's probably going to come out.
Right. Okay, so council will look to stay informed. We thank you all for your involvement. Coming to five E, talk about zoning and Todd, probably after John gives us some background, there might be something for you to add here as well, which is the discussion of the driveway on Essex Avenue.
So as you know, it's common for, for when, when there's an application before the zoning hearing board seeking relief, that council is put in a position as to whether or not they want to support, oppose, or stay neutral to that application. And this is simply just one of those situations, although there's a little bit of an interesting background on it. This is a property located 603 North Essex Avenue. There is permits pulled and internal building permit renovations last August, August 2019. They were doing significant interior renovations. What is common is that they created or used the property for storage of materials for the construction, for equipment during the course of that construction. What, it was regularly inspected as it should have been. The permits were obtained as it should have been. Your keys and Kevin Walsh went out throughout the year. In July 7, they applied for a formal use and occupancy permit, which essentially is the, if we're done, can you let us know that this building's ready to go? Kevin went out on July 10, I believe, and saw that where that construction equipment and materials were stored was actually turned into a driveway, a parking space, off-site parking space, because I'm not going to use the turn driveway because I'm not sure if it even meets the requirement of that under our code. And the sidewalk, which had been used to get up onto the property, the curb, which was previously a straight curb, had been turned into a curb cut and wasn't to code. So essentially, it's a an illegal at that time driveway and curb cut that was installed on a house that otherwise looked ready, looked like it had been. Had it gone through the approved process, no one would know difference. Kevin immediately told the contractor slash owner at that time that wasn't on the plans, that that is an illegal driveway and that he's going to need to fix that or seek relief for that. But that's not going to be approved as is. The then owner proceeded to then transfer the property to a current owner. The current owner didn't know anything about, to my understanding, didn't know anything about that the driveway and curb cut for the property they purchased was not permitted and was unapproved. So unfortunately, by the time that we were able to issue the notice of violation, we had to issue it against the new owner, because again, the notice of violation has to be against the current owner of that property. They then did file a, an appeal for the appropriate relief before the zoning hearing board. So essentially, it's, you know, to, to have, to have the driveway as is and to have the curb cut in the sidewalk as is. And that is the, the issue that's going to be becoming before the zoning hearing board. So much like other applications in the past, in fact, similar just to this issue, you know, does council want to take a position on this application? Or do they want to stay neutral? Or do they want to oppose? That's really, really the issue.
Todd, anything material to add to that conversation?
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Walker a question to clarify matters. John, I believe the zoning hearing board already had a hearing on this matter.
I thought it was continued. I wasn't sure if something was rescheduled on it.
Well, my recollection was that they voted to disapprove the special exception request and adjourn the meeting. I don't recall a continuation.
Well.
They did, they did vote and they did announce a decision to reject the special exception.
When, when would that have been?
I'll, I'll look the date up. It was on whatever date was advert, it was an advertised meeting. I'll look it up.
Todd, I agree with you. I believe that was the vote.
The hearing was held August 18.
Thank you.
And the attorney for the applicant filed a request for continuance on August 28 to the zoning hearing board, the new, and that, that's the last of the documentation that I have.
Okay, so that, that would be consistent with what I would know.
So you're both right. They voted.
So what's the purpose of the continued hearing if there was already a decision? Is it on the zoning relief then? They probably, was it, again, because I haven't been involved in the zoning as, you know, council should not be. So is the issue that they sought alternative relief in form of a variance? And that that has yet to be decided upon?
I, I don't know what the, what the, what the request for the continuation was about.
I think, I think they want to amend their application or something, but I don't think we know what that will look like.
Either they would have made a new application, I would think. That's their choice.
Well, then in that case, I mean, given that we all know the facts, council can choose to take a position, which is why we're here. Any thoughts from council members?
John, can I ask, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Ask your point of information, Cindy, and then, and then Bob.
John, this seems like this was kind of better to ask for forgiveness than permission and that we're setting a really bad precedent if we support this to maybe encourage other folks to try the same strategy. Am I reading this correctly?
The seller of the property, yes, I would agree.
I guess a question I have also, John, if they had submitted an application initially with renovations that included, say, an off-street parking or driveway or curb cut, would that have triggered additional scrutiny through, say, the landscaping ordinance and tree preservation and other things that they escaped by doing it this way? Because that was my impression and that, that's the kind of thing that's sort of, you know, makes me think it's worth taking a look at. Normally, I want to say, leave it to the zoning hearing board, but that's, that's problematic on a larger policy level. So is that, am I, is that accurate that they were used? Todd, do, and John, what do you?
Well, so the, there wouldn't have been a review, almost or something ordered by our code officer regarding what other relief needed to be done that they needed to saw. That's really up to the applicant to figure out or the applicant's attorney and their engineer to figure out whether or not compliant with our code. Whether the, that would be sought as part of the relief. For example, if you needed landscaping, but instead of landscaping, you're putting in the driveway. Ideally, you're going to ask for relief on both. But again, this isn't a, this isn't a land development in any way. So it's not going to go through subdivision land development ordinance for land development. It's a building permit for the interior renovations. So really, it's, you know, sort of like putting a deck on, you know, your house. It doesn't go through land development, but you need to make sure that the zoning requirements are correct.
John, Michelle, may I respond to your question? So first, it's important for you all to know that the, the planning commission does not weigh in on these things. It's not our role to do so. But I testified as an individual in this matter against the request. So it's important for you to know that in case, so that, so that you're aware of where I may be coming from. But to Michelle's question, had the driveway been applied for at the time that the rest of the permit was sought, it would have triggered a zoning application that would have triggered a landscape review, which was one of my objections to this process. It, the code clearly says if you are building a driveway and that, that your project has to be compliant with all the terms of the zoning code. So it would have triggered a zoning review. And in addition, the zoning hearing board itself, an interesting provision of the subdivision code is that the zoning hearing board has the right to impose landscape requirements. It's odd, it's in, but it's in, it's in the, it's in the landscape code. The zoning hearing board, if it, if it makes a decision, it has the ability to make, to make landscape requirements part of the conditions of approval. So Michelle, I happen to agree with you. I think that the way this process worked, it, it avoided scrutiny that would have otherwise been applied, particularly in regard to the landscape. And if you know that property, there's a lot of vegetation on that property that was cut down. It's probably overgrown, but nevertheless, the landscape ordinance would have called for the replacement of the vegetation to some degree.
I think the issue is that they should be, they're going to have to do that now anyways. But I think it's more, as Cindy was saying, they're asking now for forgiveness because it's already in. So whether or not you applied for it before or after, it's, it's going to be the same type of a review process. You're not going to escape that. Question is, again, are they going to say, oh, well, we already put it in, don't make us take it out? And try to use that as the asking for forgiveness aspect of it.
Bob?
I'd like to see council take a position to oppose the granting of the variance should the zoning hearing board wish to offer one. Mainly for the reason that the planning commission worked really hard for many, many years to come up with some standards that the community liked that prohibited the construction of driveways in front yards. And especially even, and even prohibits parking cars, you know, parking cars in front yards. That's was the whole purpose of the lot layer, you know, provision. And, and I, I guess I'd just like to see, to see us support the opposition to a variance. So take a, not take a neutral position on this. And I do, given that the zoning hearing board's already ruled on it, I do, you know, I do trust that they probably would oppose it again, given that it's so out of step with our current zoning. I, I feel sad that the, that the, that the owner was sold basically a non-compliant property. And I, and I think that's, that's unfortunate. And I think they should probably be supported in, you know, in being compensated whatever the way they should by the, by the seller. I guess that's none of our business, but, but I do think that that's an shame. The, the no, the the property's been there for a long time without a driveway. And I, and I guess I don't really understand, John, how they were issued just a certificate of use and occupancy at all. I mean, I don't see how you can sell a home that doesn't have a certificate of use and occupancy or how to even move into one that doesn't have one.
So the, the law requires, and it wasn't a final certificate of use and occupancy, but the law requires that unless there is a substantial violation, which is a health, safety, welfare type of violation, that the municipality is required to issue a temporary certificate of occupancy, which I think is only good for, for 12 months in order for those non-substantial violations to be corrected. So there was, we, we had to issue that based upon the purist zoning requirements under the law, under Pennsylvania law. But again, if it's not corrected, then that could be revoked. So they have the 12 months to bring that into compliance.
Okay, thanks. And I guess, and I guess I just want to add to my comment that I think if we aren't, if we don't oppose this and don't advocate for the enforcement of our own zoning, we're sort of setting a bad precedent for people who would follow that rule and who wouldn't think to construct a driveway without zoning approval. I think, I think we need to be fair to the people who do follow the rules.
You're singing my song, Bob.
Okay, so I'm going to make a suggestion a little later that we, well, we're going to add a couple motions to the action items. And this will be one of them. Thank you. Let's move to committee reports. F and A, anything else?
So just quickly, Mona had started really looking at our business privilege tax at the beginning of the year. We had lots of crises in the borough with COVID and with stormwater. And the office had requested that we kind of put that on the back burner. But we did want to talk about what is the timeline then to look up at that process of compliance and collection? And talk a little bit about our borough priorities that the business privilege tax was not identified in that list that Bob compiled last year. So did we as a full council want to reaffirm that that is in fact a priority? And then if so, that would be additive to the office? Or do we want to give a timeline suggestion if it's not a priority today? Mona, feel free to hop in if I'm not representing you well.
No, that was, that was good because I just, I think if, if we are going to move forward with it, it needs to be. No, that was, that was good because I, I just, I think if, if we are going to move forward with it, it needs to be made a priority, put on a priority list.
Okay. Other thoughts?
Isn't the collection of, I mean, there's something I'm missing actually because I, um, I think I'm generally in favor of this initiative, but here's what I'm missing. Aren't we, is the borough required by law to collect business privilege tax?
Yes, I mean, we have an ordinance.
So then what's, so, so is the issue that we're not collecting it or, I mean, that we're not compliant with that law?
I think the question is, do we know that all of the people who should be paying the tax are paying the tax? And if they are not, uh, are we following up with them on their delinquency?
So we want to enforce our tax laws. Is that essentially?
We want, we want to audit the performance of the system. And then if we find deficiencies, you know, make repairs to how we administer the system so that everyone, uh, is sort of equally burdened.
Okay, but the system is something that we don't do internally. We, we outsource that. So haven't, haven't we? Isn't, isn't that a part of our contract with the third party that does our tax collection? Isn't that built into the contract in agreement that we have with them?
It is built in.
That they're, that they're enforcing our tax laws?
That they would do this. I think we're looking to audit that and see whether in fact they are performing to the level that they say they are.
Whether they are, whether they're performing and is that, is that in part of an agreement that we have with them?
But we do have an agreement that says they will do this. So we're looking to, you know, audit and say, are they actually doing what they say they do?
And didn't they already speak with the F and A committee?
So Mona?
Did they speak with the F and A committee? They did. And the data that they showed us, um, the data that they sent to us, we found was not current. We asked them for more current data. They sent us more data. We, we see some flaws with the data.
But do they see it? Is their role to enforce the tax laws of the borough? Because that's really what we're talking about.
I think so. I mean, that, but the question is, you know, we don't have, we don't have a system in place, like there's law, there's ordinances that we would still need to update to make sure that we could, we could actually figure out who all the people are who should be paying like our.
We, we hire them to do that.
Not to update our property maintenance ordinance to find out, you know, all of the people who, to, to capture people who are registered as renting their properties, um, not to update our code or, our zoning code ordinance to make sure that it's in compliance with our business privilege tax. So, so I don't know, I might, I might let Sean field some of these.
I guess, I guess I don't, I don't understand why it's requires so many steps to figure out who's doing business in the borough of Norbert. I mean, that's their, that's the job of the tax, of taxing authorities to figure out who's doing business in the borough of Norbert, who's required to have a license and who's required to pay taxes. I mean, you know, most businesses have, say, a phone number or an address. So whether, or, you know, are Googleable or something like, why does it require a property maintenance code to figure out who's doing business in the borough of Norbert and isn't paying their taxes?
I mean, my sense when we, when we did this discussion was that they did not, they did, they took some steps to find everybody, but they did not view it as their responsibility to find every single business in Norbert.
So that's, to me, that's, to me, that's the issue.
People who, who, I mean, they, they had certain things that would trigger a mailing from them.
That, to me, that's the issue.
Something, then they would find you and then they would send you a mailing and they would expect to see payment.
Yeah, I'm just saying, to me, that's the issue. It's like, if, if the third party's not enforcing our tax laws, if they're not willing to go out and figure out who's doing business in the borough of Norbert and collect the taxes, then they're not really doing the job of collecting the taxes, which is what we hire them for. Now there are other reasons and I, I'm, I'm in favor of a property maintenance code. There's other reasons that we would take these, take these other measures, Mona, but I don't think figuring out who's doing business in the borough are the reason to go to so many steps. I, I think, you know, we hire a person who can, a tax collector who can do the job. And, you know, I, I, do you see what I mean? I mean, I, I think there's other reasons to have a property maintenance code and to have these other ordinances.
Sure.
So Bob, to be clear, what, what we're talking about, though, again, is business. It's, there's a difference between your actual brick and mortar business that you could find easily. But a lot of this is the landlords of, of renting of properties. That's not going to be so clearly. And I think that's where they're saying they could use the borough's help in trying to figure out how properties are being rented because otherwise it wouldn't be able to know that it's a business. So.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Oh, so not, so, so the prop, this property rental businesses is the ones that they're not, did they, did they, did the third party tax collector, did eCollect say, we don't know how to identify who the renters are? Did they identify that as a, as a blind spot for them?
I, I, I wasn't at the meeting and, and Muna can say, but I would imagine that it would be, and which is why some people do the, they're probably advocating that we do a property, rental property registration to require that. Um, and then we can give them that information.
I mean, I'd very much like to see us do that, have a, have a property, you know, like some kind of, um, license and inspection for rental properties. I think that's in, on its own, it's a good idea for other reasons, for, for, for life safety reasons and I think for quality of, 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 you know, the, the, of our neighborhoods. But not necess, I don't see why that's so important for tax collection. I mean, the, there's, I guess, I'm, I'm.
So Bob, just to clarify, um, so yes, John, what you're talking about is, is one of the issues. The second was folks who are working from home in businesses that didn't even know that they needed to register for a business tax, privilege tax. So that would be kind of a forward-facing office issue to put that on the webpage or make that really clear. Um, and, and then just really holding the third party eCollect accountable because the data was a mess. I mean, it was really antiquated. There were some obvious businesses missing. So there needs to be a conversation in that process of really holding them accountable to do what we're, we're paying them to do. So those are kind of, I think, I think the three.
That sounds like a good idea.
Three issues.
That sounds like a good idea.
One of the, one of the things I'll just add, so, you know, we have business privilege tax. It operates within a framework of state law that allows for it. And that law also prescribes how one of these tax collection authorities is compensated because they're private businesses that we outsource this to. Um, it is my experience that the law limits the amount of money that the collecting agency can receive for this type of work. And so the amount of work that the collecting agency puts into sort of researching and checking, uh, third-party databases and trying to find businesses is very limited because, you know, if they spend 10 minutes on each one, they probably already can't make any money collecting the back taxes. Um, and so the only way we would, we can't incent them more. And even if we shop for another collecting authority, they're going to be limited by the same financial constraints. So the only thing that we can do is sort of some things on our end to make the flow of data to them easier and more complete, um, so that we can, we can collect that revenue.
Well, I'm thinking if we're going to go to all this effort to get to, to update this database and figure out who all the taxpayers should be, why don't, maybe we should consider collecting taxes ourselves.
That, that's what the discussion is kind of about in terms of, do we, we, we don't have all the information we need to really audit them to see how well of a job we're doing. We're just kind of looking at it like, well, we know that business is no longer here and we know this business exists and this isn't on here. So we don't really have the data. We need to check that. Um, but I, I think, Aaron, I'm, I'm trying to pull up my notes from when we spoke to eCollect. I'm pretty sure he said he collected, they collected a percentage. That I don't think it was limited that way, but I'm, I, it's gonna, I, I don't know if I can pull up the notes right now. It's going to take me a minute to look back in those notes.
I think they get a very small percentage of the general taxes and they get a much larger percentage of back taxes that they collect.
But even with those back taxes collection, when you sort of look at, you know, a person and, and what they might cost for the organization and a couple of hours of work, um, unless very large amounts are owed, you know, a really high value business, sort of a person working from home very quickly is sort of becomes not worth the effort to investigate.
Is this legally outside the scope of, of what's required of our, of our elected tax collector?
Uh, John?
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of the, the, of, of pursuing back taxes for small borough. I, I don't think that our tax collector would be in a position to do that confidently.
No, I mean to collect business privilege tax.
Business privilege tax now, yeah. And I, I, I don't think that's something that tax collectors generally pursue.
It's pretty much universally outsourced around the state to one of this handful of firms.
Unless you're a larger municipality that has its own finance office. You know, my, my office, for example, uh, serves as the tax, uh, council for Upper Moreland Township. But again, that there's a lot more people that are not paying taxes. It makes it worth it to have additional staff just for those purposes. I'm not, I'm not recommending that, um, you know, and that isn't something that I think that, uh, Sean and Matt themselves could take on at this point.
No. Um, it sounds like we're all in agreement, um, coming at it with slightly different perspectives. But, um, you know, we're continuing to gather information, right? Coming up with a plan.
So the question, well, I guess that is, the question is, is this a priority or where on this, uh, on a, if it's not, are we setting a timeline and a goal for this? For us to collect this data and this information for the office? You know, rather than just punt it, are we going to say, A, is it a priority? If it's not, then I'd like us not to just completely put it aside, but really come up with a timeline. Or C, we don't want to do this at all.
What I might suggest is a, to ask the office which project would be coming off the plate that is through its natural conclusion at some point in the next six months, um, where this might fill in that gap if council chooses to make it the next priority? And how much effort you think it might take to, to, to bring this project to completion? Maybe you could come to the next meeting, um, with some estimates. I'm imagining you don't have it already in your head. Okay. So let's, let's do that. And I think that'll help us to figure out how to slide this in. Okay. Anything else for F and A? Nope. Uh, infrastructure, Mr. Bush?
All right. So, um, we talked a fair amount about, uh, the storm damage, uh, due to the, you know, tropical storm Azaius and the 100 to 500 year, uh, rain event that we, uh, that we got. Um, so obviously there was damage to, you know, we talked about the, the response to the, um, to the road damage on Conway and sort of looking proactively, what can council do? What kind of tools do we have to increase our resilience to future stormwater events? Because I think, you know, when I, when I hear something is a 100 to 500 year event, well, it's probably not. It's probably, uh, you know, you've, you've you've gotten the probabilities wrong and it's going to come up more often than that. So, um, I think we're all, you know, we've all sort of noted the effect of that. And what we ended up coming up with really was that our, our, the most obvious tool we have was something we brought up in the last council session was the threshold, um, for, uh, stormwater review for new development, that we were sort of limited in what tools we have, but we have a stormwater ordinance. Right now it's triggered at 2,000 square feet, I believe, of, um, renovations. That things below that get exempted from a, from a stormwater review. And, uh, you know, this came up, uh, last council meeting because there was a new construction, a new house that was under that limit and they put up inadequate stormwater, um, stuff and they, you know, water was flooding into a nearby house. So the, we have the potential of lowering the point at which, uh, a stormwater review happens. Um, and that, you know, that would capture some, some new development that would result in new stormwater infrastructure being put in, um, on new houses, say, rather than just new multifamily housing or new apartments or, um, and that would, you know, that, that is a, a tool we have right now. That would be available to, to, you know, help avoid future, help, uh, help mitigate future flooding damage in some ways.
Yeah, Eric clarified and confirmed at infrastructure meeting that our threshold is pretty low. Um, and, you know, that by lowering it, we wouldn't be, uh, out of keeping with other municipalities. It wouldn't be unreasonable to lower it. Um, he also said there really wasn't a more comprehensive review of the stormwater ordinance, which is relatively new and up to date, that needs to be undertaken in his view. Um, but this would be a very simple, a simple, um, adjustment to make and, and make car, you know, and, and then make it consistent throughout the ordinance, do whatever work needed to be done. It is, it's currently on our list of, of projects for us to look at and prioritize. Um, but in thinking about that, uh, has seemed to be indicating that this was not going to be a, of, a very intense or, um, you know, project that would require a lot of man hours.
Yeah, we want to, we want to pick a sweet spot so we get new houses and don't get, you know, uh, somebody's patio or something, you know, you know, it's only triggered for significant events that we think are relevant.
Okay. So that will, that'll move forward and we'll see that in a future month?
Sure. I can bring that up again, infrastructure on our next meeting and, uh, we can see if we come up with the, a number that council could consider. We have, uh, in terms of the pop-up bike lane planning, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, I believe, with, um, DVR PC to sort of outline, um, where we are and, and, uh, sort of get to know each other and, uh, uh, talk about the project there or what we might be doing. I mean, it's just a very preliminary, uh, meeting where they can see, uh, some of the sketches that we come up with for pop-up bike lanes and, uh, talk about what their role would be in that project. For the, uh, two-on-one Sevigny planning process, I think the, the letters have gone out to nearby neighbors. And there is a meeting scheduled to discuss, um, uh, two-on-Sevigny with, uh, the, the near neighbors, uh, I forget the day, at the end of September. Um, so we should be getting, uh, feedback from that, um, and, you know, hearing back from our consultant, um, after that meeting happens. Um, and then we also talked about the, uh, the parking study task force. Um, Michelle, you want to go over that? Michelle, are you around? Uh, I can't, uh?
Sorry. Okay. I was not unmuted. I apologize. I was muted. Um, yeah, we talked about it generally. We didn't get into a lot of detail because right now we're, you know, we need to appoint a task force, uh, members. Uh, I think it's on the agenda for tonight to do that. I'm going to actually, I mean, I'll, I'll move at the time to pull it or move now.
Yeah, why, why don't we just talk about?
But where, where we need to be is that we have, we have quite a few applicants. We have a dozen at this point. Uh, that's going to be too many for the task force, but I think, um, so we have sort of two outstanding things. We have, um, a little, a little sort of, um, questionnaire to send out to get some additional information back from each applicant. And, uh, also I think it'd be really helpful if we, John and I maybe put our heads together, maybe reached out to the planner who will, the facilitator and asked what they thought an ideal number would be. So I think we want to do those two items of business before we actually make appointments. I'd like to make the appointments at our next meeting. I'd like to cut, maybe now set off, set up a date to cut off the applications, which we never really put a deadline on it. We should put a deadline on it now and then plan to make the appointments at our next meeting after those two pieces of business can get done. Is that reasonable?
Uh, it seems reasonable to me and I'm looking at my calendar and maybe I would suggest a date, which is the end of the month, September 30th.
Yeah, perfect. I think we, I think that's great. And in the meantime, we'll send out a little questionnaire. We'll, you know, talk to the facilitator about the number and then we'll, we'll be in a good position to, to make our appointments for the next meeting. Anything else that you wanted to cover about that, Fred?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Yes, Sean. Mute.
With regards to meeting facilitation, Montgomery County Planning Commission has agreed in principle at this point to, lead meetings, um, help the conversation along, uh, produce the deliverables and to keep us on track. However, they expressed, uh, some concern about not being able to answer questions of, technical, technical questions having to do with, uh, parking management because they don't have that expertise in-house. So I was going to, I bring that information to council to say, to ask what you'd like to do about that. Um, technical expertise like, so, you know, similar to the consultants we hired to do the parking study, they were fearful they would get into a conversation where they wouldn't be able to advise on some matter. For instance, hey, well, well, what's, what's the best way this solution worked out in some other municipalities of this? When they tried to park, mark, manage parking in, in this particular situation and, uh, And Montgomery County doesn't want to be caught flat footed in those situations and was asking for us to propose, propose some help or solution there. And I'm bringing it to council to get your guidance on what you'd like to do.
So I'd like to suggest, maybe Sean, if we could have a conversation with the, was it TPD? Who, who prepared the original traffic study, the parking plan?
Nelson Nygaard with.
Nelson Nygaard. And they were up in Boston. You know, if they would be willing to have someone, ostensibly someone who worked on that plan, available at an hourly rate for phone calls and questions, it might be sort of a low risk way for us to open the door, to have someone we can call, to have someone we could bring in. If those questions arise, I don't know that they will. But if they do, and then if it grows into something more, we can come back to the table and have a conversation about, you know, how do we, how do we meet the needs of the, of the ad hoc group? Because of the direction that they're steering in. I recognize the planning commission doesn't want to say they are technically skilled at things that they are not. And I respect that, but I think the plan that we have from Nelson Nygaard is pretty comprehensive in terms of all of its suggestions.
Right, I think we want to make sure that the, that the task force does stay within the four corners of the plan for the most part. And also to understand that they're, you know, that they're not being expected to produce a product of techno, and then product of technical solutions, but rather a set of community-based, community-grounded recommendations and thoughts for consideration that will ultimately be incorporated into a more technical solution.
So, so just to clarify, council would like me to reach out to Nelson Nygaard for additional planning services in conjunction with the parking task force.
Yeah, and specifically at an hourly rate for someone to be available to ask questions. Look, you did this plan a couple of years ago, we've got a new task force, they're finally taking it on, they're dusting it off. Someone might call you and, you know, we respect your time, so we're going to pay you. But we're not looking for a project. We're not looking for a, a fixed bid.
Right, I think there's a good chance that we'll never need to call them, but I, I think it's a great idea to have that relationship established just in case.
Yeah, we're not looking for them to attend the meetings in any way, just to be a resource if necessary after the meetings. Or, you know, if something comes up during a meeting, can be addressed afterwards. Yeah, sounds good.
And if it's not working, you know, if that's, that is not working, well, we'll figure that out pretty quick. And we'll go down a different path that may be more rigorous and maybe more expensive. But I don't think we're going to miss anything by trying this option. Okay. Is that it for infrastructure?
Just a question for Fred. Fred, when will the broader and larger community be able to give, when and how will the broader community be able to give feedback about the Sevigny property?
Well, the consultant will be reaching out to the broader community after this initial meeting with the, with the local neighbors. I'm not sure of the exact timeline, I think it's going to be in October. That's, as I recall, Michelle, do you remember?
Yes, they met with, they met with the tenants in August, meeting with the neighbors in September, meeting with the public at large in October. And, you know, part of that is information gathering on the part of the consultant, you know, working from sort of the most affected outward. And, but everyone is going to have a chance to have a say. And even when the consultant is done preparing a report, it comes to council. So you always have a say here at the council meeting.
That's right, and anybody who has concerns can reach out to council members. You know, we at least do updates on this every month in infrastructure meetings, even if there's not a huge amount of new information. So that would be an appropriate time to ask for information as well.
I wanted to circle back to the, so that we're not disregarding that Mona had brought a survey proposal to our last meeting and we reviewed it. I, I think that that's going to be something that will be very helpful to, to put out. I, I would encourage and hope that, and think in fact, if I understood through Sean, that our consultant is planning on probably putting out some form of survey, using that tool as well as public meetings. I think that was my, I don't want to speak, that was, this is a little whisper down the lynch. And so I think that was helpful and that's something that, at the right point in the process, it would go through our consultant, that you would probably put out a, a survey as well as conducting public meetings.
Yeah, I didn't mention that. So at our last meeting, thanks, Michelle, that, you know, we, Mona brought this proposal, you know, we did discuss it in infrastructure. And once we realized that the consultant actually had a survey planned, then we thought it was best to leave it to the consultant to do, rather than having council take it on. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Mona, for being proactive. Okay. Public safety, safety move to public safety?
Yeah. We met the first week of September and we reviewed the climate action plan, which we've now brought to the council. And Joe Toscano was with us and Jesse Lidle. And they have partnered with Sean to review the borough building side of the plan. So thank you, Sean. And then we discussed recommendations that came to our committee from the Shade Tree Commission. And those included a permitting process that actually is called for in the standing ordinance to take down a tree. But that's a permit process that has not been, I guess, operationalized. And so there were other recommendations as well. The committee is generally supportive. Sean reviewed these recommendations and had some questions. So our committee will review that, that item again in October. And it may take us another month or two before we bring it to, to council. The third item was the face mask ordinance. So if you recall, at our last council meeting, we discussed it as a council and we all agreed that we would move ahead. And I think Aaron asked that it be expedited and the solicitor prepared some, prepared a draft. Aaron also suggested that I collect feedback. So I have heard from a number of folks, including at our, at our committee meeting, the mayor and the police chief. And there were concerns about the enforcement mechanism. So one proposal that came from the committee was possibly a resolution as an alternative to an ordinance. So, you know, but the COVID situation keeps evolving and we are all as citizens observing folks who may not be wearing masks in the downtown. And so what I've done is I've reviewed with the solicitor, the ordinance that we as a council looked at last month to try to consider some of the feedback that I have heard from different council members, from the police chief and from the mayor. And at this point, you know, this is something we'll come to, I guess, later in the meeting. We have a number of options that John Walker can walk us through for the council to consider.
Did you want me to discuss those options now or later on the, the meeting?
Aaron, it's up to you, I don't know when.
I missed a beat. Let's wait till we introduce the ordinance.
Okay.
Can I just ask, Rob, are those, are those options highlighted yellow in the draft?
Those, those, those are the topic points for what ultimately, if you want to forward with it, there's also the option of whether or not you want to proceed with just face coverings or face coverings and gatherings. So that, that's sort of the threshold issue, then the sub-issues are those, those items that are highlighted. I just highlighted them to, for, to make it ease for discussion points.
Thank you. Okay. All right, let's move to public comment. Any members of the public? I don't see any. No, hearing none. I'll give Jim Spear a moment to text me if somebody's commenting. What was that? Is that police radio? I think so. Okay. So other than 911, we have no comment. Let's move to item 8A. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Cindy?
Sure, I moved the Borough Council to approve the minutes for August 19th, 2020, business meeting of Borough Council.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, minutes are passed. 8B?
I moved the Borough Council to approve the schedule bills for the general highway sewer and solid waste fund and authorize the Borough Manager to pay bill.
Second.
Seconded, discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Let's just, let's jump around here, let's do 8F. Escrow release of Narberth Place. I think that's finance and administration.
Hang on, I have to scroll down here.
Clear out some of these quick ones.
Uh, hold on. I move to release escrow for Narberth Place.
Second, seconded. John, you want to just add a little color? We had some success here.
Yeah, I've, I've been dealing with this and Eric Johnson, the engineer in the Borough Office has been dealing with this for a very long time. But I, I have to admit, shorter than I anticipated that we would. This is really just two small issues and of those two small issues, one issue was very small regarding filling in some ground. The main issue was that the, the homeowners association, the residents at 200 Narberth Place, which is the renovated church, had complaints about a water running in off of the sidewalk and into their driveway. Escrow wasn't released simply because there were sandbags piled to stop that and that wasn't a permanent structure. So I think there was just a little bit held back for that to be addressed. It was being addressed during those torrential rains in early August, which added a little bit more difficulty to it. There was a removal of sidewalk and putting down of like a flagstone walkway in order to reduce the runoff. Didn't really seem to do the trick, so the developer also then agreed to create pileup dirt along the edge to sort of create a, a slope away from the water. Apparently, from what I've heard from the homeowners association representatives, that, that seems to be addressing the issue. So I think they're appreciative of the borough's efforts to stay on top of this. This, I believe, would be the final release for this request and it's really just for that small stormwater runoff issue.
Thank you, John. And the reason I pointed out is, we do these, we collect the escrow, we release the escrow. It's just an example to the members of the public and to ourselves, this process works, right? You know, we keep a little money to make sure everything is finished and done to our standards. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Let's go to, we'll go back to C, Resolution 2020012. Rob?
Okay, okay. I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2020012, a resolution of Narberth Borough Council extending the time period for outdoor sales of food and merchandise for existing businesses in the borough during the coronavirus pandemic until December 31st, 2020, per the attachment.
Second. Cindy's got it, seconded by Council Records. Any discussion? Okay, Bob? Nope.
It was Michelle who seconded it. For the record.
Okay.
Is there a reason we're doing it just till December 31st and not until the end of the pandemic or until the end of the, the lift of the state of emergency?
Go ahead, John.
Not necessarily. I think the idea was, let's not keep it indefinite, but we can always re-extend it at any time we felt need to. I think the idea was, we don't know what the winter is going to be like. And even though it is in December, I think it's just more of an arbitrary end of the year. You know, we could always readdress it easily by passing another resolution.
Okay, thanks.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay, 8D? Rob?
I move that Borough Council authorize the Borough Manager to advertise ordinance 1027, wearing of masks in public space, per the attachment.
Okay, now, is there a second? Seconded by Michelle, okay, and now let's talk about the attachment, which has some options. Rob, you have it open, I'm opening it. Could you lead us through these options? Or John?
Okay, well, I can just say briefly that, because I, I did speak with John Walker about it. So there are a number of things that can be decided by us tonight. But I guess one of the first questions to figure out together is whether we would include at all the provision regarding gathering size. Do I have that right, John Walker?
Yeah, the, the sub-issues appear in both of the ordinances, but it's my understanding there was some discussion as to whether or not it wanted to be focused just on face coverings. And then whether or not we also wanted to address gathering sizes. The reason gatherings was included was because of the State College ordinance had been enacted in Pennsylvania. There aren't too many in Pennsylvania. There are a number in larger municipalities across the United States. But I think that was the first row one in Pennsylvania, so we sort of worked from that. But certainly it's very easy to take out the gatherings aspect and keep just the face coverings if that's something that council would like to do. So I think that's the threshold issue. And then regardless of that decision, the, the remaining issues that need to be discussed are, one, whether or not you wanted to allow the face shields as a potential face covering that is permitted. Two, whether or not you wanted this to also apply to borough-owned parks, playgrounds, open space properties. It would still apply to, to inside borough buildings. And then, three, the fines, finding system, the amounts and, and essentially the amounts and how you'd like the fines to, to be.
Okay, so let's just do a quick, like, without discussion, just sort of straw poll. Who believes it should apply to limit gathering sizes as well? Show of hands? Okay. Three?
John, John, can I ask for your sort of an update on the, I don't know what's going on with that case in Western Pennsylvania where, wasn't there, there was a judge who
Yeah, so.
ruled against the gathering size. Well, I mean, what is that, does that, what does that mean for us, if anything?
I, I wouldn't put too much weight into that. I, I think the, it has a practical aspect that I think you're going to get questions as to whether or not what you're doing is, is legal because of that. That, that, that was really addressed when there was a blanket, Governor Wolf's blanket prohibition on gathering and not his 25 inside 250. And, and the idea was that it was, wasn't specifically tailored. So the current restrictions that are in place, again, may not pass muster or would more likely pass muster. The second thing, that's a Western District of Pennsylvania. The only time I think that you're really running into issues is if the Third Circuit Court of Appeals determines that that you can't restrict gatherings as we had or in any way. If that's the case, it would be my opinion that the gathering provisions of the ordinance would be unenforceable. Doesn't make our entire ordinance unenforceable because we have a severance clause. So we could, we could at that point in time just enforce face coverings. And then the third issue, which hopefully is that this ordinance isn't going to be around too long and hopefully this all gets taken care of. So how long it takes for that to actually get to the court system and maybe a moot issue at that point.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just sending a copy to the mayor here. And then, so again, those interested in including the gathering size limitation, show of hands? One, two? Okay. Two, two and a half. Okay, I'm just going to, you know, keep track here. And face shields, who would like to permit face shields as a substitute for masks?
What, what is the current law on that? My understanding is that schools have agreed to allow face shields instead of masks. I'm wondering, what is the current law on that regarding the governor's order?
Um, I believe face shields are under the governor's order. I'd have to check. I, I think they're popular as a way of, of certain persons that may have a handicap and can't wear the mask on their, on their person. They like the face shields. Um, but again, our ordinance has, uh, exceptions for those handicaps in the first place, so technically they wouldn't have to wear anything.
Yeah. If I remember correctly, I believe that the Pennsylvania Department of Health has, has said, or maybe it's Montgomery County, I don't know, has said face shields would be okay, but I think that, I don't think that's part of the CDC guidelines. I may be getting that wrong. So, I may, I guess my point is, I think that there's, there's a very reasonable position on either side and there are different opinions. I don't think we're constructed by legal authority necessarily.
Maybe what would, would give us the cleanest ordinance is sort of less is more as some of these things continue to percolate in terms of who's recommending what and saying what. Given that John says with the ADA, I mean, someone could, could make the claim their use of a face mask through angle. Yes?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would agree with that.
Well, I think what, I think what John said is that if you, if you have a disability that makes wearing a face covering difficult, you're simply exempt from the ordinance. Though, but, uh, it's not, it's not clear that we would need to allow face shields. Um, they're not precisely as effective, but...
Alright, so I'll ask the question again. Who would like to include face shields? One. Okay. Um,
When you say, when you say include it, you mean?
Uh, allow it as a, sort of written into the law as an alternative to mask. Okay. Uh, borough open space. Who would like to, um, enforce this on borough open space?
That, that so depends on, than the specifics. It's very difficult because the, I mean, truthfully, I think the regulations probably should be different for open space than they are for the downtown and interiors, but I don't know that we're going to take the time, given particulars John points out, and he's so right, that this is not a permanent situation. I don't know that we want to spend the time to work out every last permutation. Um, so I guess it's
I feel strongly that we should not, we should not have an ordinance in, uh, in the open space or playgrounds. I, I feel that it's, that we should not include open space and playgrounds as places that people be required to wear masks. I think those spaces are, are used by people who choose to use them and not by necessity. Whereas, whereas, uh, you know, shopping in the downtown is a necessity for many people. So, I see those as very different kinds of space, or entering a borough public building is a necessity for some people. So, I would, for that reason, I would exclude that be required in those playgrounds and open spaces.
Mona, I don't want you to lose blood flow in your fingers. Go ahead.
I, I feel very strongly in the opposite direction, Bob. It is public space maintained by the borough and accessibility is a really important thing. Um, with the issues for people's emotional wellbeing these days, I don't think it's any more of a necessity to go to the store than it is to be able to get outside and exercise. I think, well, yes, you need food to live, but I think you also, for people's emotional wellbeing, they need to be able to feel safe entering parks and public spaces. And, um, you know, I've gone back and forth on this issue. I first was strongly in favor of it, then I was concerned about enforcement. But what really, a couple of things changed my mind. When I was in the downtown, I think two weekends ago, I walked around and saw, there were a lot of people wearing masks, but there were so many people not wearing masks that I felt like if I were, and, and I've seen this in parks too, that, like, the playgrounds, why shouldn't a kid be able to go to the playground? Why should immunocompromised children be, feel like they can't also go to the playground because none of the kids are wearing masks? So, to me, it's an issue, even though it's maybe not, it's too recent to be an ADA thing, the requirement of masks, but it's, it's still an accessibility issue and these are public spaces and no one should feel like they cannot access them because of immunocompromising issues and other people just don't feel like the inconvenience of wearing them. I was in Drescher, PA, last weekend and I got to the park and the park was full of Little League soccer and I got there and I was like, oh my gosh, COVID spreader, here we go. And I stopped and I looked and every single child playing soccer and every single parent that was there were all wearing masks and they didn't take them off when the game was over. They wore them from their cars all the way to the fields and from the fields all the way back to their cars. And I thought, wow, like, if we could do that in Narberth, maybe we could safely get sports up and going again. So, I, I feel really strongly that public spaces need to be accessible, even for people who have immunocompromising issues.
Okay. So, I'll ask again. Uh, Cindy's comment?
Great. Just wholeheartedly support what Mona was saying and to add to that, I mean, there was a tennis camp on Friday happening in the park that made me think, I don't want to be around here, or the baseball where kids are sitting shoulder to shoulder in a dugout. I think this gives us some leverage to, to your words, Mona, to make the park accessible to, to everybody.
Okay. So, again, a straw poll. Um, all in favor of including, oh, borough open space in the mask ordinance? Raise your hands again. Okay, you got four there. And fines. John, could you lay out?
So, that would be, but you said borough space, that's borough parks, playgrounds, open space, fields. Okay.
Um, so regarding the fine structure, uh, did you have some suggestions of how we might approach that?
Um, I'm going through the ordinance now. Right now, um, I think the, the way that the fines set up right now is that there's two, two, I guess, parties who could be fined. One is the individual person who is not wearing, uh, the mask when they need to be wearing the mask. And the second is the, uh, person who responsible for a business. So, it wouldn't be a business entity itself, but the manager or the employee or the owner who really is letting people use that business or, uh, and not, not wear the masks as required. Um, regardless, the first offense is a, a, a warning. Um, and I think that's fair. Uh, and I would recommend that, particularly if you have people who pull into the parking lot at Narberth and are unaware that this ordinance is in place and they're walking in downtown area, uh, to, to be hit with a $50 fine, $100 fine, or, or any fine for that. May create some issues. Uh, as far as the amounts go, um, I would recommend having escalating penalties for a second offense and then a third or subsequent offense. What those would be, again, the way it was drafted, it was 50 and 100, but it could be $10 and $20. It could be, it's small, it could be large. It's, it's anything that, that you really do feel, uh, would be, would be appropriate. I know that there were some concerns about how are we going to keep track of that? Uh, you know, what, what is the second offense? What is the third offense? Um, I, I would encourage you just not to worry about that level of details. Again, the worst thing that would happen is if someone gets two $10 fines instead of a $10 and a $50 fine. It, it's not, it's not going to be the end of the world. It's, I, I think the concern is you're going to have your serial people who will be on the radar, uh, and, and, and needed. Those are the people that you're going to, uh, be able to address and, and, and know and have those accumulating daily fines for this. So, I think really the, the purpose is, what are the amounts and how do you want it to escalate, if at all?
Okay. So, council members, I'll throw, uh, yes, Andrea, go ahead.
Does it work with minors? When minors are, uh, does, do the parents get fined? I mean, how, how does it work with minors?
Yeah, the, the, the way it's, it's drafted, it does have that parents or guardians are responsible for ensuring their minor children wear face coverings unless the exception applies. So, um, I, I think that, you know, you, you could cite a, a minor if need be, or you could cite the parent, um, if that's something that, that you wanted to do. Again, that's not unheard of. If you have a 16-year-old who's speeding, they get cited. If you have a 16-year-old who, you know, you see littering or urinating in public, they get cited. Those are local ordinance violations.
Let me ask you, what, what, what happens when it's someone like a 12-year-old or someone who's much younger and, uh, how, how does that, how does that work?
Yeah, a, again, I, I would hope that their parents would be somewhere around there. This, this ordinance makes the parents responsible for the minors.
So, question to council members. Who is comfortable with warning $50, $100?
I, I would, if it were up to me, I would make the fines a little lower. Um, and I, I, I hear what you're saying about the great, the great, um, escalating fine scheme, but I, I think there's also something to be said for this sort of simplicity. I'm not sure that it provides that significant of a deterrent, whether it's, oh, 100, it's, I mean, I don't, I don't have a strong dedication. I just feel like in this instance, simpler might be better. Um, it's like, it's, it's a flat 15, like a parking ticket. It's a flat $15. You always get a warning first and a chance to put your mask on or get a mask given to you by the enforcement officer. And if you don't do it, then you get cited, you know, $15 and chances that we're going to be really writing those $15. Fines out seem very small under the circumstances, given the relative, low burden of putting on a mask that's offered to you. But, you know, if it were me, I would just sort of keep it simple and not even put the onus on, uh,
Okay.
on, on the enforcers to have to keep track of escalating fees.
I second what Michelle's just said. I think that's
Okay, I see Mona nodding, Cindy nodding. So, warning, uh, uh, warning and then an, uh, opportunity to put on a mask. And, um, if you don't do it, $15.
So, the escalating fee would be there to handle, like, a, a business owner who refused to comply, basically?
Business owners, maybe, yeah.
Well, that might be the person who would get, yeah.
We know people who pay, you know, $150 in parking tickets every day because it's the cost of doing business, right? So, do you want to put something in place for, or do you want to keep it simple?
For the business, for the businesses, I'm really comfortable with the escalating fee structure that John's put in place because it's much easier to keep track of.
John, can we, um, can we bifurcate it for the businesses to have a different fine structure?
Yeah, right now, there's, uh, two different paragraphs, one for individuals and one for the businesses, and it's people responsible for those businesses.
So, business is warning $50, $100, and, uh, people are warning and $15. That, am I hearing that right? I'm seeing nods. Okay. That decision is made. So, cycling back, the only area of discussion where there was sort of a tough, uh, or split vote, um, was regarding borough open space. Do we want to spend five minutes, um, discussing this, or do we sort of take the four-three straw poll and include borough open space, uh, with our mask requirement? Hearing that no one is interested in having this argument, we will include borough open space, eh, in the mask requirement. So, the ordinance that is currently on the table advertised is, um, not to, um, regulate gatherings, not to discuss face shields, fines, as I just described, warning $50, $100 for a business, warning $15 for an individual, and that borough open spaces are included in the geography.
Meaning that you are not allowed to wear a mask in, or sorry, you have to wear the mask in the
Have to wear the mask in the borough open space. Right. So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing here.
And it's my understanding that, uh, if you can maintain a safe, a safe six-foot distance, uh, this is only when you cannot maintain a six-foot distance, uh, from other individuals, not, not a member of your household.
Mona's nodding. John, I don't know that that's what this says.
No, that's the reason I was opposing it, the, the restriction, the requirement in open space. Because my understanding is that in the business districts, we're requiring these masks be worn, whether you're near, whether you're close proximity to someone or not. That's why I like the ordinance. I, I, I like the ordinance for the business district because if you're a person walking down the street, you know, somebody approaching you, say, from the interior of a store, suddenly walking onto you, you know, you don't have to suddenly put your mask on for them. You're already wearing your mask to protect them. Whereas in the open space, I see it very differently. I don't, I think in open space, you can run, you know, you can run or play or do your, or main, or do your activity more than six feet apart from people and you're outdoors, so it doesn't matter.
The ordinance has an exception for that. It says controlled non-contact practice and playing of games or other physical activities such as yoga or certain athletic conditioning drills with a limit of 25 participants, including coaches and spectators, if all persons can maintain a distance of six feet from one another. Um, maybe you could be more comfortable if you add, didn't just limit it to, I mean, it's very nice as, as drafted. Maybe you could add to it, uh, you know, not just practice and playing of games, but, um, recreational walking and other, you know, recreation-like activities.
Yeah, I would be more comfortable, I would be more comfortable with less restriction in that regard. I'm more comfortable, however, in the business district that they be required at all times.
I think they are.
Whether you're maintaining distance or not.
Is that, is there a consensus there? It seems like there is. Andrea?
My concern is, uh, say, a lot of people just tend to walk the perimeters by themselves, uh, of the parks, uh, which is technically, if you're on the sidewalk, you're on the borough property and nobody's around. Uh, I, I think it's, it's, it's
I think, I think the point of view that I was expressing just got lost. Um, um, what I'm saying is that, I'm, 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 I actually don't, I oppose requiring that masks be worn in borough open space. However, if we're going to require that masks be worn in open space, we should, they should not be required if people are more than six feet apart in open space. I agree with that. However, in the business district, I'm in favor of the mask ordinance at all times, regardless of proximity. I'm opposed to the mask ordinance in open space and playgrounds. That's, that's my view on that.
Okay. So, I'm gonna punt over to John here. Does the language allow for what Bob suggested?
Um, the, right now, the language, the exception seems to only be for organized physical activities. And, uh, as Michelle read, the controlled, non-prac, non-contact practice and playing of games or other physical activities. We could say the controlled, non-contact practice and playing of games or other physical activities or recreational activities.
Right. Yeah.
And kind of keep it broader.
Let's do that.
Yes.
If all persons can maintain a distance of six feet from
So, Bob, are you
And that's only for the open space.
Right. Well, it's not by, but we could make it be, right? Because that's the only six-foot exemption is in that, is in that sub-paragraph P.
Okay, so there's no six-foot
We could add in parks and open spaces and then limit it to those areas and add in recreational activities.
Okay, but am I correct in understanding that there's no six-foot exemption in the business district?
That's what we're trying to work out.
I don't think so. Is there, John?
But, no, I mean, if, if, if you can do a controlled, non-contact practice or playing of games in the business district, um, that isn't, that's a, that is a flat exception, just as if you were a two-year-old or younger or inside a personal vehicle or, uh, you know, inside a personal private dwelling in the business district. That, that is an exception. Now, practically speaking, I'm not sure if there's a place where you can, can do that in the business district.
But if you expand that exception to include recreational activities, then maybe we want to put, put geographic border on, just have it just in the parks.
And, and essentially what we're saying, though, for the business district is, though, it's upon public streets or sidewalks in the, in, in the 5A or 5B business districts. So, I can't see that you're going to be doing any of those activities on the public street or sidewalk, um, legally.
I'm, I'm, I guess I want to take one more stab at this, Aaron, um, for making my case and I really, I understand. I really do.
But, but what I think Michelle is saying is, we could, under subsection 3B, we could add just a very specific exception for parks, playgrounds, fields and open space to say, uh, except if six-feet distances can be maintained.
That's right. And, and in the business district, not have that exception.
And not have that, yeah, inside the buildings, not have that in the, the business districts, not for employees that are preparing, servicing, packing food.
I think it makes the law a little more too complex, but, so I'm gonna just take one more stab at this. I'm, I again oppose the requirement that masks be worn. Other, I mean, other than the Commonwealth law, you know, if the Commonwealth's law is being followed, I mean, it's not our jurisdiction, but I'm, I'm opposing a local law that requires masks be worn in parks and open space. Because I feel as though, you know, we already have general guidelines around that. We have state rules. And I understand the importance of providing And I understand the importance of providing accessibility to to, um, you know, people who are, say, have autoimmune conditions or have have secondary conditions that, and 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 I and I say that there's many places one can recreate if and away from people who are not wearing masks. And I suspect that most people will wear masks when they're closer than six feet, when they're in the parks and the playgrounds. Be for the same reason that they were doing it at those games, unless unless those games you witnessed were in a regulated, you know, unless the the municipality that had an ordinance in that place. Like, I don't know why those people were being also cooperative, but it sounds like, you know, that was, they were doing the right thing. And I would trust that people will do the right thing in the parks and playgrounds in Narbor. However, I I just think it's
But they're not.
And for the sake of a simpler ordinance, I would only require that masks be worn in the business district. But that's okay. I just I just wanted to give it one more try here. That's all.
Bob, I agree with you, but they're not in Narbor. I mean, you go down there during baseball and it is not the picture that Mona described. It's kids sitting shoulder to shoulder, parents sitting shoulder to shoulder on bleachers. So maybe that district did have an ordinance, um, but that's certainly not happening in our parks and open spaces.
Well, it's it's Drescher, PA, if if John comes across it. But um, yeah, I I agree. It's not it it, I also see inequities, you know, I I I was actually gonna ask, can we spell out more clearly in the in the four P exception for um non-contact practice and playing at games? I was gonna say, could we spell out that sporting events for contact must all spectators and coaches and athletes must wear masks? Because I see inequities with allowing baseball games to be played in the park when we know that baseball has, that COVID has spread through Major League Baseball, which has all the resources in the world and people being tested all the time. We also know that it's been spread through little leagues. And so I see inequities with allowing basket ba- baseball to go on, which does have contact, but not allowing basketball to go on. So I I would like to see that, I would actually like to see some stronger language in the in P saying that sporting events with contacts such as baseball, soccer, uh, whatever sports are played in the park, football, basketball must have masks, so.
Okay, so
I think it's, I think it's implied that they have to wear masks unless they can fit within basically this exemption, which would be just a physical activity that where you could, limited to twenty-five people, where you could, where you were keeping, maintaining six foot distance. I mean, if you can do that during baseball, great. If you can do that during basketball with a with a drill instead of a contact game.
I was okay with that when the gathering size thing was in there because it clearly spelled that out in the gathering size provision. But if we take that out, then that that clarification about that goes away. It was in five E. So, but we're taking that section out.
So it sound, it sounds like this is going to take a little more fine tuning to get everybody happy. Um, so John, well, first, council members, if you have specific concerns, I see, email me with John.
I think we should, I think we should just work this out now. It's
I I agree.
I agree. I agree too. I'm I'm willing to compromise what I said. I just was making, I was just making an effort to get to get others to agree with me. If four, if three other people don't agree with me, I don't want to hold this up.
You're so close.
So then, so then let me uh let me restate what is currently on the table. The motion uh to wear mask of requiring masks in public space without restrictions on gatherings, without any mention regarding face shields, requiring um them to be worn in borough open spaces and then the fine structure as we discussed. That's, that's where we are. Okay, all in favor of advertising? Say aye. Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you. Um, eight E, uh, Michelle, you wanted to um punt parking study task force?
Uh, yes, as as I said during infrastructure, let's let's push this off. We we have our deadline now, end of the month. We'll put out, um, we'll put out some questionnaires and we'll we'll make our selections at the next meeting.
Let's talk about UCC Board of Appeals. Mr. Metric, do we have some applicants? Believe Mr. Cornwell, maybe?
Yes, we have. I believe Mr. Cornwall's already been appointed um to the UCC Boards of Appeals and is currently serving on it.
So who is the applicant?
And it has not met. I don't have any record of an applicant here. This was a forwarded to me by a member of council.
Member of council while I'm looking this up, ideas? Who are we?
I remember appointing Mr. Cornwell to the UCC Board of
Mona, I believe it, uh, no, no.
Yeah, that was, that was on my email. I wasn't sure if that had been done or not.
Okay, well, it's been done. All right, mission accomplished. Cross that one off. Um, can I get a motion to amend the agenda to add an eight H? Um, which would be to adopt the new rules for the Human Relations Commission? Eight I to accept the Climate Action Plan and eight J for the Borough to take a position to the zoning hearing board on the Essex Avenue property.
Aaron, the the, in addition to for the Human Relations Commission, they also ask for the expanded procedures. As there's two, two, two sub requests in there.
Okay, uh, well, H H one and H two. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda as stated?
I move to amend the agenda as stated.
Uh, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, motion is, uh, the agenda's amended. Thank you. And now we'll move, let's do H I and J, um, and then we will recess into executive session prior to uh eight G. Can I get a motion regarding the Human Relations Commission? John, maybe you can phrase it and then someone can make it.
Uh, I think this this would be a motion to uh to authorize the Human Relations Commission uh to proceed with the expanded procedures uh system established as requested. Uh, which is whenever the uh protected class is not otherwise covered under state or federal law, which is what they've requested to do.
Okay, someone would like to make that motion? Anyone? No?
So moved?
Okay, so moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Council Rickards. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes. The HRC has some more teeth. Thank you. Um, Rob, would you like to uh make a motion to accept the Climate Action Plan?
Okay, yeah, I would um like to make a motion to accept the Climate Action Plan recommended to us by the Environmental Advisory Council and the Committee on Public Health and Safety.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Fred got it. Thank you. Um, any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Wait, I did have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Cindy. Make your comment. It's not gonna change.
Can we as part of that, though, I mean, give it a line? I I mean, really make it something substantial? Like, we made the suggestion that it go under, you know, public safety, whatever we're calling it, environmental decide, climate action plan. But I I'd like to do something other than just adopt it, but adopt it and then really again, operating under the assumption that a budget is our value statement, you know?
Well, you, we're we're preparing a budget, so, you know, part of that discussion is we can do that. We don't need to make a motion to that extent tonight. Let's, let's figure out the smart way to work that into our budget and then that will ultimately be approved in the next two months.
Okay, so adopt and create a budget line or category.
Well, we are not adopting. We are accepting the plan.
Accepting, sorry, accepting.
We're accepting the plan. Um, if if your committee would like to move forward to find a budget line uh for it, that, you know, that would be a separate component. That wouldn't be part of this motion, but I'm completely open.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be part of the capital plan directly. It would be part of the uh the general fund budget or the operating budget, right?
Well, there's some recommendations that fall under the capital, yeah.
I I could see it on both sides, especially with vehicle purchases.
Okay, so um, thank you for jumping in there, Cindy. All in favor of accepting the Climate Action Plan? All right, and so now, now we have to work to implement that plan. And that speaks to budget items. It speaks to integrating its suggestions throughout our decision-making process. And that's a falls into each of our laps.
Aaron, to go back to the, I'm not sure, the Human Relations Commission had the second motion regarding the adoption uh of the of the proposed rules and regulations.
But um, okay, uh, can I get a second mo- can I get a motion to adopt the new rules and regulations for the Human Relations Commission?
I move that we adopt the new regulations for the Human Relations Commission.
Second?
Second.
Michelle, and any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, motion passes. Okay, that's passed as well. Um, can I get a motion to oppose, to to appear before the zoning hearing board and oppose the applicant's request for relief for the uh, you know, illegal driveway at six oh three Essex Avenue?
So moved.
It, it does feel a little, I mean, it does feel a little weird to direct the solicitor to oppose it when we actually haven't seen the amended application. Is that?
Yeah, I I I agree. I'm wondering if we, if the language, I wonder if we could just ask the the solicitor um um su- support the the zoning or the our zoning laws, you know, be there pre- present to represent our zoning laws in regard to that application specifically.
So so it's my understanding where the status of this may just simply be that previously it was the seller who uh applied for the relief. Now it's the buyers who are applying for the relief, uh, but it may be the same. I imagine it's the same request. Different party wishes why, you know?
It may, it may not be as creative as you think. So, John, can we, can we authorize you to oppose this? Uh, unless there's some material change in the circumstance, at which time you'd come back to council and let us know.
Yes, I mean, I I can, I can start conversations with the attorney. Uh, let let her know of the position and see what they'd like to do. Uh, and if they have anything where they would like to try to reach out to make some sort of a condition or agreement with council, I'll certainly discuss that with council.
Yeah, or have some really creative idea or something. Uh, but other than that, we're in opposition.
But alternatively, yes, that that I'm being directed that the Borough would like to enforce the code a- as drafted.
Okay, is there a second? I didn't actually have one.
Second.
Michelle, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. Unanimous. All right, um, let us uh take a pause from public session and we will go into executive session. Um, so Civic, if you would like to drop and um I don't know that we need, uh, Matt or Sean, maybe you can speak to whether we need Matt or John. Okay, Jim says we're good. So, Mr. Manager, do you have a report?
I did. I gave I gave the ten minute version at the Finance and Admin Committee. It was an update of our progress. Budget versus actual progress. Bottom line, we're doing better this month than we were last month. We talked a little bit about um the holdup with the audit of financial statements, and we also talked about the operating budget getting underway. But I'll save those details um for anyone who wants to contact me about that. And the uh written report will be uh placed in the meeting package tomorrow.
Thank you. Any questions for the Borough Manager? Mr. Solicitor, anything?
Yeah, well, first for the record, uh, I think that's, we announced that we've done the executive session to discuss real estate matters for the purposes um of that executive session. Uh, for solicitors' report, um, I've been working on the the face covering ordinance. And I just received today back comments that I haven't actually opened or gone through yet with on the omnibus zoning amendment that's been kicking around for the next couple of months. So what I've gotten back is, which again, have to review, are both uh Todd Bressi's and Maggie Dobbs sort of comments to to address some of those last last outstanding issues. There have been two or three other issues that have come up to be added to this. Um, so it's sort of blessing in some ways that the longer it goes, the more things that could be caught. But I think we're, again, hopefully moving forward to a finality that we'll be having an ordinance to be able to show you to to go through for for the zoning changes.
Great.
I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Uh, the monthly reports have been filed by the various agencies. Any comments for the good of council? Okay, new business? Old business? Had all these discussion items at the beginning of the meeting. Um, Sean, do we, go ahead?
Just super quickly, I think it's really important, um, as we're thinking about the mask ordinance being voted on, on that we put up signage. We get signage ready to put up early on at the parks and business districts so that that would, I think that would take care of a lot of enforcement issues.
And do we have, um, have we, can we, if we do not have purchased packs of those, you know, those sort of paper accordion surgical masks, I guess, drugstore masks, so we can provide them to our enforcement officers? I mean, I feel a lot better about going up to people and telling them to wear a mask if we have something to give, especially kids that have forgotten them. Is that, I mean, is that something that seems reasonable? I, maybe not. I don't know.
Sure, yeah, can we just buy these little masks for police? Can I add to that too on our communication plan? Maybe we can put that in our kiosks, which are all in downtown zones, like a mask up Narbor.
Um, yes.
And um, I'm gonna nag you all again about a fall up in house. I mean, we can do some outreach there.
I heard talk about a banner at the Public Health and Safety.
I'm pro banner, but there's some folks that are not pro banner and I will not reveal their identity.
Tearing this community apart.
Aaron, I just, I guess this is maybe just an agenda item for the next meeting, a question. Um, I'm I'm wondering about the usefulness of looking back at our twenty twenty priorities, like just revisiting that list together. And maybe just thinking together about sort of like how, what did we get right? What did we sort of, you know, how do we do just a kind of an assessment of of where we've been, what we, what we're doing?
Yeah.
What we might want to keep on there for the twenty twenty-one year so that we can get a, get a jump on that.
Um, I think that's great. And for the, that would be for the workshop meeting.
The workshop, the the first workshop of next, the workshop of next month. Is that, is that all right?
Yeah, could you circulate that again?
Yeah, I will. I have to find it.
Just so I have it handy. Thank you.
And then
Great. Okay, um, now can I take a motion for adjournment? But before I do, Sean, are there any other executive session matters?
A very brief personnel matter. I promise not to keep you more than three minutes.
Okay, so we'll adjourn and then we will not rejoin in public. Um, motion? Anyone? So moved by Mona, seconded. Who's fast? Rob, uh, all in favor? Aye, aye. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Good night, Civic Association. It's been real.